We can help you out.
All right, buddy.
Let's see, one Andrew not in the middle.
He can sit here.
He's in each direction.
He just didn't want to sit next to you.
Nah, I guess not.
You guys knew each other.
Well, guys, we are on, we're muted, but.
So, any further questions?
I just have one other one. I noticed like on the zoning map, there's like a wetland.
Yeah, that's way off to the right.
But that's like your footprints, like what you kind of have now.
Yeah, yeah. I'm probably three or four hundred feet away from that. The sag in the road is more towards the Wayne side of it.
When this passes, John will have to come to the office to fill out a building permit, add a sign permit, maybe a few other things. So that will all be covered, setbacks, wetlands and everything. When he approaches that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the main concerns would be just traffic considerations, which as long as you're satisfying the state, that's a state issue. And as Chip said, the environmental stuff to be taken care of. As it goes down past the state building permit, I don't see an issue there. It's just because we've been around before, have we confirmed that it is R2? Yes. Okay. So, it's permitted.
Yes.
Okay. So, if I could help you out.
Yes, for a good example.
The first item on the agenda will be John DeBois. DeBois, help me.
DeBois.
DeBois.
Boy.
Who is the esteemed former owner of Johnny's Auto. He has recently sold that and he's moving on to his looking to do a a used car dealership on the space, which is known famously by locals as Wayne's World. On Main Street. Reasons he's here is because it's a change of use. And in your powers, you are required to rule on a change of use. If you find it is according to the ordinance and whatever other questions you have. I don't think this should be too involved. I think most people know what's there and what he needs. I'd ask you, Ed, could you maybe introduce the the city members before we start?
Or we introduce ourselves, starting from Doug Ferris.
Ene Berna.
Ed Bergman.
Mitch Kove.
Richard Mackley, new alternate.
And Tom Moran.
Chip Stevens, code officer here, and our attorney.
Jim Katsepeke.
Katsepeke. So, without further ado. John, would you like to come up here and explain what you're wanting to do?
So.
Maybe stand at the end of this table facing the commission.
So, what transpired was I don't, the state required me on a change of address from fifty-eight Fairbanks Road to thirty Main Street for the state. So, they sent me the paperwork, I filled it out. And I went to have this notarized. And Chip said, well, you haven't been approved for cars. I says, well, back when it was Wayne's World, I had the concession stands up to six cars. And flea market tables. So, he doesn't have any recollection of these six cars because that was up before the planning board. And I got approved for six cars. I don't know why it's not on the paper that he had because we got into the whole discussion about Paul, householder, and how many cars he could display and, you know, yada, yada, yada. So, that's why I'm here. So, basically, I'm looking the state, you know, I got sixteen by twenty building out there for the office. I want up to six cars. It's not going to be a big deal. Probably one or two at a time. Flea market tables, the same as it has been. And while I'm doing this, I'm going to go for storage because there's thirty-two acres. And I feel the need for storage as far as boats, motorhomes, travel trailers, et cetera, et cetera. Could be up in the back. I've had it bush hogged and cleared. You know, I spent a few grand to open that all up. There's plenty of room. There's thirty-two acres. It's five hundred feet on that end. Thousand feet deep on the other side and like twenty-two hundred feet on the road. So, there's plenty of room for the stock. So, that's what I'm proposing is to just have a change of address from fifty-eight Fairbanks Road to thirty Main Street.
If I may. So, the confusion here is a little confusion. In order to use a land that allows things like used car sales, auto repair.
No, no auto repair.
Okay, but it's all put together. You need to have a use permit for it. Your six cars that were approved for Wayne's World. Like I said, I didn't find the approval.
Yeah.
But I don't imagine it was for a used car sales. Displayed six cars. Now you want to sell. That's why you have a state. All right. And you've just amended your application a bit, which if it's okay. We'll make it a stretch to add the storage to this. That's an extra use that is allowed there. But, so, there's two things that you'll be considering then. Storage and the used car dealership. And both require a use permit. Okay? So, that's why we're here. That's what you're here to judge. And what we're going to look at tonight, like I've explained to John, is tonight you find the application complete. If you do, then you move it on to a public hearing next meeting.
You know, I guess a little spiel while we is, you know, I've been in this town for over sixty-six years. I've had a business on Fairbanks Road for forty-eight years.
John, you're addressing the board, not the audience.
My track record explains itself as far as cleanliness, being organized, you know, I'm not putting stuff everywhere. I'm not. You know, I have the town's best interest at heart, obviously. I've been here this long. So, you know, I'm three generations deep in this town, so it speaks for itself pretty much. So, if you have any questions, I'm more than welcome, you know, I'm here to answer them if you have any questions.
So, any questions for the board? And by the way, Mr. Chair, take over.
Yes, please. I think, I've got a question. I'm going to address that we maybe can have the board ask some questions on you. John, I just wanted to, the only question, I think our job is to determine if the application is complete as the CEO said, and then if completed, we vote on it, then we'll you know, go to a public hearing on it. So, my question, and I think the application looks recently complete. You got thirty acres of land. You got plenty of frontage, it looks like. I have a question about you're going to have free uses there. Am I correct, John? You're going to do the tables? You want to do a used car sales? Is that correct?
Right, which it was anyway. I don't know why it's not on there, yeah.
I've seen trailer.
Yeah, it's not going to be like thirty, forty cars. It's only going to be probably a couple at a time, but up to six.
Well, you got a lot of land.
Yeah.
Was your intention to have all, my only concern had to do with traffic patterns and stuff in that area. You get a lot of traffic. I live on that road, I know. Are they going to be parking off, off-road? They won't be parking off. You'll have off-road parking, right?
Oh, yeah. I have a blueprint designed with an entrance. The state wants a sign out there. They want an entrance. They want display areas, you know.
Okay.
So, there's plenty of room for all.
And you're familiar with some of the sign ordinances on page forty-three of our land use order?
That I'm not sure of. I have a sign that's been on fifty-eighth Fairbanks Road for years. I plan on moving that out there.
Okay.
On the highway. It's pretty bad, so. But I'm sure that whatever the dimensions are, they follow that category.
Once he gets approval for this, he'll have to submit.
For the sign.
A sign permit, yeah.
Any question? Actually, a statement, not a question for the applicant. So, Ed, good points. I'm just going to say it. Those forty-eight years Johnny's been in this town, I've watched him help families who couldn't pay their car bills and he put them on payment plans so they could get to work. He sold cars to several people that I know that he could have done a lot better on profits. So, he's actually done some really kind things for this town and merits this, in my opinion. And finally, Ed, good point on traffic, but if we're not overly concerned about the farmer's market, I don't see how traffic could really be an issue. And that's just being fair. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Just slowing Steven down.
You know, I'd almost be more, I agree with what Doug said. I've definitely been on the receiving end of some of the good work and very fair prices from Johnny. I think I would want it to be, I would want to make sure his application is complete and that he's covered as much as anything else. Whatever requirement of somebody who's going to use the land for this, I would want you to run into issues down the road. So, let's make sure he's got his ducks in a row so we can look at it all together and say, cool, he's good. Here's the things he needs to do next. State will be telling him. He'll feel comfortable to cut all the bases and he's not exposed or anybody that we haven't checked all the right boxes, right? So, I think that's how we're going to look at it. It makes sense. There's, I think, there are vehicles there already sometimes. You have a motorhome on the property, right? So, I mean, I see they, and they, it's never unruly, unwieldy, nah. Let's just make sure that we're asking the right questions and he can get any information that he needs, any answers that he needs to complete an application and and take it through the process.
I didn't ask for stuff. I just.
You don't actually have to. You don't have to. The board does not have to ask the chairman.
Okay.
Do we have any more questions for the applicants?
I'm just wondering, is it going to be open storage or there will be like no structures?
Right, it'll be open storage, yeah. It'll be, you know, I'm I'm looking at probably, you know, shrink wrappers and bulbs and stuff, but it's going to be, you know, not moved out. It's going to be conservative. It'll be white or brown, you know, I don't want it to stay about, obviously. No more than two nineteen's down over there.
And not like a smart unit.
No, no, it'll be just back against the wall. Like I said, it's five hundred feet on that. Plenty of room up there. You know, my father always said, when you drive by a place, look at it like it's somebody else's. What do you see? What's wrong with it, you know? So, that's when I drive by a place, I always look at it, well, this needs to be moved, that needs to be tetralated, you know. You want it neat, organized, you know, you want a place for everything, everything in this place.
I'm looking for specific screening requirements in the ordinance. Do you have any screening plans or is it just going to be open? Like, is there going to be any screening from the road or not?
The storage, I'm going to put all the way back and it's going to be to the right as far as I can go. It'll be probably buffered by trees and et cetera. I've had the property cleaned. I spent a few grand there this spring, had it all cleaned out and, you know, chipped and trees removed and stuff like that. So, it'll be all the way back into the right as far as I can go in the woods. And like I said, I, there's thirty-two acres out there, so I can talk them in anywhere or, you know, you're not going to drive by it and say, oh, geez. It's not going to stick right out.
Great. And I'll try during the meeting to find our specific screening requirements just to make sure there's nothing that we.
And all storage, you know, it's going to be temporary, obviously. It's seasonal. It's going to be like temporary, seasonal. It's not going to be all term stuff. Everybody that stores everything is going to be really short-term stuff. It'll be through the winter months.
Right.
When, if, when this passes, John will have to come to the office to fill out a building permit and a sign permit, maybe a few other things. So, that will all be covered, setbacks, wetlands and everything when he approaches that.
Hey. Yeah, my main concerns would be just traffic considerations, which as long as you're satisfying the state. That's a state issue. And as Chip said, the environmental stuff to be taken care of as it goes down past the state building permit. I don't see an issue there. It's just because we've been around before, have we confirmed that it is R2?
Yes.
Okay, so it's permitted. The only related use that's not permitted is a junkyard, so as long as it doesn't, that would not be valid, so it doesn't become law. I guess I would suggest just for completion that we quickly go through here. Look at what's in the application so that we can, if anybody thinks that something is not complete.
I think, if you, you opened the discussion a little bit when you talked about the multiple uses and you said typically there, there's a separate permit for something, but you're going to let that roll up under this?
Well, the storage.
The storage.
Yeah, which is also.
Do I get an R2? Or we get asked if we think this is complete? That's, that's going to roll up on us.
Where is that in the zoning ordinance? What's, what are we calling the storage? Looking at your uses, the table of uses. Is there one that's actually titled storage? Because I didn't see that. I saw warehousing. I saw junkyard.
Maybe I skipped over it. I know there's a lot going on in this person. We have to have something because the guy in two nineteen.
Right, that's what I was. No, he was a auto repair shop.
Did he also, did he also carry the boat store?
No, he wasn't doing storage.
I think it just says storage of chemicals. Storage tanks, and then it references it under light industry and warehousing.
I see warehousing. That's what I was closest thing I could find.
Which is not.
Which is not permitted.
Right.
And again, I don't want to derail that this is for finding the application complete. I don't want to have. We could consider this as an accessory structure to his auto, used on auto dealerships.
Accessory use.
Accessory use. Auto and pet storage is accessory use? No, they're saying that it could be. You approve the auto dealership. This could be an accessory use to that.
Would that require a separate application or?
We can amend the application right now with consideration, or we could start all over.
I'm.
I wasn't aware of the magnitude of the storage when we started, so, but what I'm saying is if it's okay to the board, which you should have a vote to amend this to include accessory storage, then I think it'd be okay to move forward.
Okay, with the idea of, I mean, we don't have a
accessory structure.
accessory structure. So, Chip was pointing out that we have accessory structures are permitted.
So. Where is that?
If you look under industrial or institutional. Accessory structure is admittedly a vague term.
Yeah, I guess I don't have the definition of accessory, so.
Accessory means something that's customarily incidental to our companies. So, for example, you know, Porsche or a garage would be an accessory to a residential dwelling. And you might have storage as being accessory to an auto sales unit because you have to store the cars somewhere that you're going to sell.
In addition, if you look under commercial on your land use, it has principal accessory structures under commercial, so.
But it's not a structure, right?
Well, your storage is going to be a structure, right?
No, it's going to be open air.
So, that is.
There will be warehousing as well.
So, there will be, there will be a structure or no structure?
No structure.
No structure. This is just boats and cars, right?
Well, it's mainly boats, RVs, travel trailers.
Okay.
Probably won't. Well, there could be some cars, but it won't be a long-term shot.
Okay, so this is almost more.
This is getting a little bit complicated. What I suggest is that the board go forward with the used car dealership. And we'll have to come back again for this because there's a lot of questions there among everybody.
Sales usage is a conditional use in the R2?
Right.
There is that section that says for light industry and warehousing, which I think this would be, which is considered maybe light industry. That it says you can have storage associated with that if it's outside, if it's screened with natural fencing and not visible from outside properties.
What are you saying? Can you give me a better one?
That's.
Put your ears.
So, we don't have to get into it if we want to.
That's probably more of a conversation for the next meeting. If we're just trying to find it completely right now.
Yeah.
I feel like sometimes we have these good conversations and then we don't have them in the meeting we're supposed to be having them.
Sure, yeah. As long as it's not a matter of completing the application, as long as it works, so, yeah.
tickets checked, and five, existing use, auto sales and flea markets, approved as a flea market, um, six, posed use, auto sales and opener storage. We have a lot with twelve nineteen, lot depth, ten fifty-five, thirty-two acres. Number eight, structure proposed to be built, built sixteen by twelve building on site, because it's already there, right?
Yes, it's not to be expanded.
No, that's just the office.
There are no non-conforming structures existing or proposed. And then we have signature.
With a board, um, you'd like find it complete, you have the next meeting, which is a public hearing, and at that time, you might wanna consider things like limitations on how many cars, how many boats, uh, and other questions that have come up tonight.
Hey, does anyone have any further questions before we vote on whether we find the application complete or not? If not, then do I have a motion to find the application complete?
Motion to find the application complete, second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
John, are you available a month from now for the Thursday in October, we'll be getting together and we'll have our public hearing, we'll have your neighbors and everybody else by.
Yeah, do we, is a butter notice responsible, responsible of the applicant?
That's my, that's my thing.
Your phone.
Taking that all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, John.
So, the next and last item on our agenda is a hearing on the, on the, um, those modifications to the mobile homes are being campground ordinance. I guess before, I have questions from the board, does the committee have anything further that we would like to, we'd like to open with anything or?
Well, it's a clarification, you just said this is a hearing, but this is not. Okay, you're, it's just all of a sudden, it's like, what?
Discussion. Do you have anything you'd like to open?
If I can jump in for just a second, cause I was noting that Chip was passing out the, the red line copy of the ordinance with the changes to planning board members, and some of them may have had the opportunity to read it before tonight, but some may not have.
Right.
And so what might be useful to the board, I suggest would be for the committee members whoever, on behalf of the committee, to just outline the changes that have been made, what, whatever, whatever you'd like to highlight, as, that's part of that new and revised ordinance, so that the board can, can understand, the public can understand uh, what changes have been made from the prior draft. Would that be appropriate?
That sound good?
I would just like to say that since, um, this August meeting, uh, the committees met twice, um, we met last week, last Wednesday, and Jeannie was able to attend, and we also had Chris Bracken from Jellystone was able to attend. And so we had really, I felt like it was a very productive, you know, good input and good, at times, great conversation um, between us all, uh, we had, we took a lot of time looking at the input we got from the UZMB, and went through and, and tried to either make some tweaks or justify, um, some of the things that you would comment on. So I don't know how you wanna proceed with this.
Well, I guess, as Jim suggested, do you have, would it be easy for you to get sort of a broad outline of some of the changes that you did make between this last meeting? And this, I, I mean, I understand if you don't have those all on your head, I, like, I can see a number of them, I can.
Yeah. Uh, I'll start with just, um, one thing that you, you had brought up at the last planning board meeting was the comprehensive plan and what it said about, about, um, I don't remember the exact wording, but, um, encouraging, you know, development to our, um, businesses, businesses into the town, and so we made sure that in our uh, report that we did and in the ordinance that we took apart from the comprehensive plan, it talks about small business, encouraging small businesses and, but still maintaining the, um, rural, small-town character of Wayne, and that was pretty clear in the comprehensive plan. And I think, um, you questioned, there was something about we put a limit of eighty camp sites, and you wondered if there was a question of whether or not eighty camp sites was, was a number that could, a business could really have a decent business, that is kind of the gist of that.
Yes.
Particular, so, um, we did, I got in touch with that, the name um, Campgrounders Association, which puts a main camp, camping guide out, and of the hundred and seventy-six campgrounds that they have, campground owners belonging to that association, we found that almost fifty percent, forty-seven percent actually, of the campsites in Maine are eighty or less campsites, which we felt that was because we had picked eighty as a number that this town, um, might be able to you know, put a limit on, on eighty, and so I think that made us feel comfortable with being able to recommend eighty sites, um, right currently, and I'll take Jellystone, even though this is not a Jellystone ordinance, but currently, you know, they, they, they are able to maintain their existing number of campsites, that's over two hundred. You know, they already have over two hundred campsites there, and in the whole, through the main campground guide, um, there are only yeah, I guess, so less than only statistics say that, there's only about five percent of the campsites in Maine that have like two hundred sites. And, um, so I don't know, we, we felt that that, that helps to justify picking the number of eighty as a number, thinking that each campsite could have up to six to eight people staying on the, on each campsite. You, oh, you questioned about, you asked about dates, um, of operation, and, uh, we, again, through the campground guide, I found that, um, uh, of the hundred and seventy-six campgrounds, there are only eleven that stay open all year round. Um, but there are almost eighty percent of them, seventy-eight point five percent that open sometime in May and end sometime in October. There are a handful that open as early as April, and there's a handful that closes early as September, but eighty, about eighty percent of the campsites, seasonal campsites in the state of Maine have a date, opening date sometime in May and ending date sometime in October, and many of them were picked like May fifteenth, October fifteenth, but we put in here the wording that they would be able to open the third Friday of May, so they can have a whole weekend. Um, and, and the third Sunday in October. And we, we passed that by Chris Brannigan, he thought that was very fair with being able to give them, you know, if, if May fifteenth ends up in the middle of the weekend, you can't tell people that they can't, they can't come until Saturday instead of Friday night. Um, just so some of that wording, some of those things we tweaked, we put in there after we did a little bit more, um, looking during some of these other statistics.
I can go over a couple of the things.
You go, you take it.
So just, um, focusing on, uh, stuff that we did that was in response to feedback that we got, um, if you look on page ten under the, the the sort of the regulations that relate, the proposed regulations that relate to maintenance and operation, um, we modified the quiet hour requirement to move it up to ten o'clock in response to some comments we got from the manager at Jellystone, who thought that nine o'clock, you know, might be a little bit tough in terms of the operation, um, but what, and what we learned was that, you, you know, their general approach was to, um, basically shut things down, you know, as, as it got later in the evening, but they wanted to make sure people still were able to, you know, do things at campground and use it, so we thought ten o'clock was reasonable, and then we added, um, that, uh, activity sponsored by the campground, so if there were, you know, events or parties or whatever, you know, those would not extend beyond nine o'clock. So we thought that was a reasonable way to help out, outdoor events, we thought that was a reasonable way to help sort of, uh, regulate the, uh, issue of maintaining, uh, quiet, but still allowing the campground to be able to operate. Um, with respect to, uh, trash pickup, uh, we, um, included in there uh, the need to, to do recycling, but, um, rather than having trash pickup as some other ordinances do be required on a twenty-four, uh, uh, twenty-four hour cycle, we left it at weekly because we got input from the campground that, that, that there are times when they really don't need it any more than weekly, and when they do, they just have the trash haulers come out on a more frequent basis, so we thought that made sense. We, uh, relaxed the requirement around, um, having, um, uh, structures, uh, the use of campsites. Um, and it, it's, it says very clearly now that, um, uh, the campsite use can include having a screen room, um, and, uh, you know, other kinds of apartment structures, as long as they're not permanently fixed to the ground. Uh, again, based on input from both the public and from Jellystone as to how, uh, campgrounds are typically used. So, for example, there are some instances where they have people who are there seasonally, they rent for the entire season, and they may put up not a permanent structure, but just some kind of, uh, storage area to put things in, and, you know, we thought we thought that was reasonable, and rather than having stuff just strewn all around to allow it.
Preferably.
Yeah, probably preferable to have, you know, some kind of temporary structure to store stuff there. Uh, we made, we made significant, and then Betsy, you can go, we made significant changes to, um, the, the beginning, to avoid the sort of the whole way we described what a campground is and what a campsite is, to avoid all the confusion that we tried to fix the last time by creating a new definition for, uh, RV campgrounds. We just left it as campground, and then the uses are the uses, and, you know, we explained how that's regulated, but rather than trying to come up with new definitions or plug holes in the existing ordinance where definitions didn't exist, for example, there is no definition of RV park anywhere in the existing ordinance, we thought it was much simpler just to have go with the existing definition of campground, modify it to some degree to make it consistent with other, with other town land use ordinances, and then, and then to have the reference be to a campsite and to make it clear that the campsite needs to be of a certain dimension, required dimension, and, and have whatever the structure may be. And we list consistent with the existing ordinance, a bunch of different types of te- uh, temporary living quarters, which is again, a term used already in the existing zoning ordinance. Um, we didn't try to create an exhaustive list, instead, we just went with the idea that there are lots of different kinds of temporary living quarters that can be put on a campsite, a tent, an RV, a camper, whatever it may be, so long as they're temporary living quarters, which we thought was a much cleaner way to sort of get to the issue that I think most people were concerned about.
Don't set yourself up for somebody to come up with, you try to list, put together an exhaustive list. Somebody gives up something I'm gonna call different, it's on that list, right, so I'm much smarter than to go at it from a general perspective, we've been agreed upon definition.
Well, and to, to, um, continue with what Ted was saying, that we actually, you might notice that we deleted from the title of the ordinance, we are recommending that it just be called the Mobile Home Park and Campground Ordinance, and take out the reference to uh, recreational vehicle park, because as you said, there's no definition in our zoning ordinances that tell you what a recreational vehicle park is, but yet the definition for campground includes recreational vehicles. So it really doesn't seem like we should, you know.
Well, it's, it's redundant, it's what you said, right, so.
Exactly, so we thought maybe just cleaning that, cleaning out that, up that term, getting rid of recreational vehicle parks, RV parks, um, those all fall under the umbrella of a campground, if that makes sense.
So, and just one general comment, what, what we tried to do to make it easier for, for you all and for everyone to follow along is the bubbles on the right-hand side were, um, hopefully intended to be kind of like landmarks for you to look at, or, or, uh, to, to point out where there are, uh, you know, uh, recommended changes that we thought were significant enough to be point, to be sort of brought to your attention, explaining why, at least in shorthand, we thought the recommendation made sense, and giving you some references to other uh, zoning ordinances and land use ordinances that have similar requirements.
And we, we talked, we talked a lot about, um, without changing or doing anything with our, you know, with the zoning ordinance, that whole Article Eight, Section C, whatever, that talks about the pre-existing non-conforming use, we, we're not rewriting or asking anything else you put into that, but we did put in, um, the very end of this ordinance where it talks about conflict in ordinance. But this is already in here, about the provision which establishes the higher standard shall prevail, but we're also adding in the term of, or greater restriction, or greater restriction. Um, cause that's the way it's worded in a lot of other ordinances in other towns, that the the provision which establishes, and we're talking about any town of Wayne, state of Maine, or federal law, a provision which establishes the higher standard for greater restriction shall prevail. Now, I don't know if it's a question for Jim, but if, if that's stated in this ordinance, does that then mean that, um, in our zoning ordinances where it says land use table, no expanded use of a campground is allowed in R two zone, isn't that the greater restriction than anything else that you read in that Section A, Part C, pre-existing non-conforming use?
Yeah, well, that would be a reasonable argument.
I say reasonable argument because it's simply susceptible of that.
Say that again?
I say reasonable argument because I, I'm not a judge, and somebody may be suing by these things at some point, so do not.
Well, what, whatever, I mean, we, nobody can predict what's gonna happen tomorrow, the next day. No, I'm just, I'm just commenting that I think reasonable people can always disagree about what things mean or don't mean. All we're doing here is we're not asking anybody to decide anything tonight, we're not asking anybody to come to any judgment about anything. We wrote a report that explains what, what, what our best thinking was, and that's just out there for anybody to look at and evaluate and come to their own judgment, you know, but I think that's a whole different question then. Did we, you know, have we appropriately addressed what some of the issues were that led to the moratorium ordinance being enacted in the first place in terms of concerns that people had about campground development, and is what we're proposing something that the board thinks is reasonable or not, or needs to be tweaked in some way or not? Um, and then, you know, we move on to the next stage of getting public comment and having this go through the process that can be voted on. I think that's kind of where we're at.
Agreed, and, and a comment, I mean, Jim's point saying, um, reasonable argument, can we go in support of the question of the initial question before you, you went out a little bit? I think he's simply saying, and I think you heard it as yeah, it makes sense, however, he can't tell you black and white, the answer is perfect. Beyond that, what you said is, um, yeah, I, I think every individual sitting up here in front of you recognizes the need for an updated ordinance. And, uh, we're individually and collectively very. And uh we're individually and collectively very interested in getting an ordinance that's clean and tight. Um I'll speak for myself, but I'm pretty sure there's also uh individual and collective agreement up here that you guys have done. Uh an amazing job and right now, I think from my perspective at least, I can't speak for everybody on this. We're sort of iterating through this now to get it to a point where it's crisp, it's clean, it's fair, it's unbiased. It's updated and to your specific question, you've incorporated um a lot of good thinking on. All of the areas that I think we've collectively come up that. Need to be addressed or we think should be addressed. So now we're just at that point where. All right, how many iterations should we go through where there's another good idea and we go, you know what, this could be skinny a little bit more? I I smiled a little before because in my day job. I'm in contract hell right now with a whole bunch of statements of work and master services agreements. And typically, the more red that I see. The more I'm like this in this one, the more red that I see in a sense, it means progress. So the more things that we agree on, you know what, this is extraneous, this is confusing. This is redundant, eh eh eh, extraneous, redundant. The more red I see right now, um without throwing the baby out with bathwater, um I feel good about because we're getting crisper and tighter. So. I'll apologize to you guys if you feel that we're just giving you a hard time. I don't think you feel that way. But really trying to get it crisp and tight so that when if we make recommendations and think this is good to go to the select board. That's they go, this is good. Right? Jack Welsh asked somebody to come at him with the best proposal they can give. Heard that story, right? Jack Welsh said, the best you can do, and the guy said, I'll come back. They did like five times. Finally, the guy said, this is the best I can do. Jack Welsh says, well, now I read it.
Yeah, I would just couple reaction to that, which is very helpful is, you know, I I do. You know, over the last month, we we worked very hard to um get as much feedback as we could. Outside of the feedback we got at the last planning board meeting and uh just being objective, I think. It was really helpful and I think we were able to improve on our first product a great deal between. You know, what we initially presented a month ago and what we're presenting today. So that's everybody's better off for that. So we're we're, we feel pretty good about that. And the second thing is just your comment about like the amount of red. Um that's great that you see it as progress. I I would just give one other way to think about that is. The red really shows where there's stuff in there that wasn't in there that really needs, we think needs to be in. Well, so the blue, sorry. The blue is what we want, sorry.
I know, I was gonna say, wait. That's the stuff we're crossing off.
So let me see if I'm. Yeah, so there's a lot of blue. The reason why there's a lot of blue is because there's stuff in there that wasn't in the existing ordinance that we thought needed to be there. So for example, buffering and screening, which we thought really was sort of non-existent in terms of. The exist, the regulation of the existing campground. So we added a lot of detail and requirement around that. That we found from uh, you know, other land use ordinances around the state.
And and I will say there are, you know, this is, this is still draft and just. Just going through this quickly, I mean, there are a few little, you know, some technical things that still need cleaning up. And whether a few little, not necessarily typos or wording or the structure, but so there are still a few little tweaks. But um hopefully there isn't anything of substance that needs too much changing.
Which is a great segue to Andrew asking if anyone has any, anything they'd like to talk specifically about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. If I may, uh maybe you want, do you want to take public comment? If if there's a public comment, I I have a few comments after reviewing these things I'd like to go through with board. I'm a little bit, they're gonna have a public hearing about.
Well, you could treat this as a workshop and a workshop is just a meeting. At a workshop, the public has the right to attend, but not to speak, but they can speak if they're requested to. And so if if this board thinks at any point that public comment would be helpful, you could ask whoever we hear who wants to speak to say something. But I do have a memo that I prepared today after going through this uh to go through with the board if that's. This might be an appropriate time after we've had the explanation as to, you know, what this is about. Office of the board and had several copies. I don't know if I have enough with everybody out here that have these. If you could please have a.
Jim, would you sort of have a discussion amongst ourselves with the folks in the audience listening and taking notes to to then?
Right, I I, you know, ultimately, this board has to make a recommendation for select. And to the voters. Assuming that this goes from the select board to the voters, because there is a moratorium.
Can I say something?
Excuse me.
Yeah, I mean, I know you guys need to have the discussion that you need to have and which is great and we'll obviously be listening carefully to that. But there are a lot of people out here who've been here and who I think are interested in it. If time permits, I do think the more input, the better. So if there could be some time for public. Is what that would be great.
I think we 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 were open to that. We expected that, but we we thought, hey, if if. Jim and I know folks who have read this stuff pretty and we have some thoughts.
Yeah.
Maybe we discuss or you guys listen and take notes and go, oh, I really want to talk about that one and yeah.
Well, if my, I guess, yeah, my feeling is I'm happy to have public comment here. If time permits, I think because we will have a public hearing next week for. Public comment, but I'd like to make sure the board gets time to ask their questions. The board, right, maybe first.
Yeah.
Jim's input, and then time allows.
Right, so this is almost right. This is this is almost a board gathering with the planning board, right? For the committee.
Board. Yeah. Back to the planning board, it's new and improved draft. We've had a chance to, or we will have the chance to review it. And so um I got this late Tuesday and I really couldn't pay attention to it until yesterday. So if I glossed over a couple of issues. Or or missed something, I apologize, but this is what I saw as the highlights. Uh again, this is up to the board. It is a legislative function. Usually you're you're dealing with applications and you're sitting in an administrative capacity, quasi judicial capacity. Looking to see, does this meet all the standards? Here it's a, it's a legislative capacity, but you have. You have an ordinance, you have proposed amendments to that ordinance, and really um. This is an odd situation and I'll explain why. Uh I'll try to make it as simple as I can. Back in nineteen seventy one, that's when the town first passed a mobile home park, recreational vehicle park and campground ordinance. Goes back to that nineteen seventy one. In nineteen seventy one, state didn't have shoreline zoning. That that wasn't required until nineteen seventy four and that remains the only zoning that's required statewide, just to protect water bodies. The town did not adopt townwide zoning until, what, nineteen ninety two? And when it did, what it just did is basically expand the shoreline zoning ordinance. It didn't go through the process of comprehensive plan and a special townwide zoning ordinance that many communities do. It took an easier route, which many main municipalities have. So what was in existence at the time that this. RV park ordinance, mobile home park ordinance was passed was a subdivision ordinance. So it's really understandable that this refers to the subdivision ordinance for certain standards. And doesn't refer to zoning because zoning didn't exist. If you were going to regulate the dimensions and the performance standards. For RV parks, for mobile home parks and for campgrounds today. You would put those in the zoning ordinance, which is where you will find all of the other. Dimensional requirements and all of the other performance standards, all of the other uses and land use activities in the town. So that's why it's. This committee was working with what it had. So I'm not, I'm not being critical of the committee, but I'm explaining that. If there is still a disconnect, it's still, you know, you have two separate things. This. If the mobile home park RV ordinance and campground ordinance provisions. Should be in the zoning ordinance. It shouldn't be separately anymore. The other function that this mobile home park, recreational vehicle park and campground ordinance serves is is a licensing ordinance. It's a police power ordinance to make sure that the public health and safety and welfare is protected. By having the code enforcement officer go out there every year and check that the water is potable. Are is everything in order? Do you have all your permits? Are you consistent? Do an inspection? Okay, you're good to go for another year. So it both does a licensing function with an annual permit. And it does a land use switch uh uh function which runs with the land. And which should have been placed and would have been placed if there had been one in the zoning ordinance. So do you want to perpetuate that by continuing to have two separate ordinances like this? Or would you rather see the standards go where they belong? Because right now, the way the draft is and and the reason that you can have confusion, if you take a look at. Section one, definition C. The definitions in part two, article one of the Wayne zoning ordinance and incorporated in this ordinance and apply, except as modified or added below. And then there's an addition, so campground is definitely is differently defined than in the zoning ordinance. So does that mean that this is a campground under the zoning ordinance? Is there some daylight between the two? If it were all in the zoning ordinance, it wouldn't be any issues. It wouldn't be any questions.
Good, no question.
Guys, please. And and so there's these sorts of things that can happen. It's not intended mischief, but it can happen. The other part of it is there's a definition in mobile home park in here that's different than in the ordinance. Zoning in particulars. We municipality enjoys broad home rule ordinance authority to adopt ordinances to regulate. Activities that are within its uh that are municipal in character and also where the state hasn't denied the ability to regulate. Explicitly or impliedly. If you take a look at the municipal law statutes with regard to zoning. It specifically says these preempting municipal home rule authority to do otherwise. So there is a definition of mobile home park and state law and you can act differently.
Could you speak a little louder?
I wish I had a microphone, I could. What what I'm saying is that state law defines mobile home park.
Yeah.
State law sets out certain regulations for mobile home parks. And the municipality is not at liberty to change those definitions, to change those standards. So we have to be careful with these definitions, not to not to violate state law or to violate state law requirements. So these are the problems with having a separate set of definitions that are additive to what's in zoning ordinance. You you create some daylight between the two and you also may, as I'm sure it was unintentional. Uh walk into some areas that are really exclusively within state authority. So that those are some problems. Uh there are some little nits in here, for example, uh. Under section one A four, the the last line and must meet the subdivision standards under the town and plain subdivision regulations. Well, as you know, later on, it's not all of them, it's it's H and K. So. You know, that that needs to be dialed back a little bit. When you look at things such as uh permit fees. This eliminates the the fee in the ordinance, which is fine, but it doesn't say. Which fee shall be set annually by the select board, which is the next step. The the select board should be setting a fee annually and then we'll know what to apply when they come in and chip knows what to charge them. Uh lot width, just, I I didn't look at every one of these numbers, but I I took a look at that because I know the lot width. Was recently changed to be fifty feet on the access road. And the ordinance always says that it has to be five hundred feet along normal high water. This is for a campground site. Well, this has one provision where it says that the uh the. In um the section two B one, where the minimum width of a campground, I believe the word site was left out. Or a lot was, uh site was left out, but it says shall be five hundred feet at any point. So the entire site would have to be five hundred feet wide. And then you flip to the next page and uh it's. Seventy five feet in width measured at the front lot line and four on street. So. Which is it? It was planned from fifty to seventy five, but it has to be five hundred all the way across. So there are these little inconsistencies, but. Things that need to be looked at. Land suitable for development is used several times, talking about the area that can be used for campsites. For uh within a campground plot, but it's not defined. Temporary living quarters, I highly see a definition of it. There are increased setback distances from lot lines and there's a new two hundred foot setback from residences. That thing all be fine and well, but that's there and it hasn't been there before. So the board ought to be aware of it and take a look at and see what the basis is for it. There's a provision in here which requires invasive species uh inspections for boats that are launched from the campground. Fine, I I I understand uh, but aren't there also problems potentially with boats that are launched? From a a house that's rented for the week by some Massachusetts resident or an Airbnb that's uh rented by someone from New Hampshire. Creating their boat. Don't those equally present a threat of introducing invasive species to to the lake? And and I mention that because the state regulates this extensively, the Department of Inland Fishers and Wildlife. And the town could adopt an ordinance if it's a problem uh like Naples did for uh. Invasive aquatic plant survey ordinance and and uh require people to to do the inspections. Is it is it just a campground problem and? I I, you know, I just throw that out there. It is something to think about. It it certainly, I understand the reason. To have an inspection, but isn't that a townwide issue, not just a campground issue? Consistency with the comprehensive plan. This is a tough one. We, all zoning ordinances are supposed to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Well. This isn't the zoning ordinance. The RV campground, but it should be part of your zoning ordinance. So are we going to apply the consistency with the con plan? I suspect you should, because, you know, a a zoning ordinance is an ordinance that defined that divides a municipality up into districts. And prescribes different uses and regulations for each district. That's what your zoning ordinance does. That's what your RV ordinance would have done if it had been adopted when there was a zoning ordinance, but there wasn't. So. What do you do with it? I I don't know. It's neither fish nor fowl, but I I. If you were going to look at your comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan, eh as you've seen. And let's talk about it for a minute. I see comprehensive plan for Wayne Maine draft three ten sixteen. Was a final one ever adopted by the town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the only one that's available on the website and in and in town hall. Uh it'd just be nice to know that it's it's final was adopted by town meeting. The idea behind a comprehensive plan is that you take a look at. All of the characteristics of the community, its natural environment, it's. The community and okay, I I understand, but I'm trying to draw this out.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is his minute, this is directed to the board. Please withhold your questions and comments till he's done. Thank you.
If it's too basic, stop me. I'm just, but but the idea is that you look at a community, you take a snapshot of of the community. And then also look at where the community wants to go. And then you put together an implementation plan, how you get there, the goals and strategies. So when you take a look at the goals and strategies, it it is both, it's both preserving the rural character of the town and also economic development. As I read the report. It seems to stress the rural character and. Natural resource protection and omit some of the portions with regard to to uh. Economic development, particularly which elements of the the economy to develop. That's not a legal issue, that's a policy issue. All I'm suggesting is take a look at their report. Take a look at their ordinance draft and take a look at the town's comprehensive plan. Read through it. Read through what those goals said, because in all of this, in their draft and in their report and in your review. It's a balancing act. You're looking to balance competing ideas of what Wayne should look like. Or competing issues with regard to Wayne. So for example, under the role of economy goal, one is to promote, attract, retain, support the growth and potentially incentivize. Small businesses that strengthen our existing, now I heard this small, I understand. Uh existing niches of economic clusters in the Winthrop Lake's regional economy such as agriculture, recreational. And it explicitly says campground, summer camps, golf courses, boating, sailing, kayaking, swimming, hiking and creative economy. So think about whether this. So think about whether this does that. Uh and part of it too is to maximize uh economic potential while. Capitalizing and maintaining on the town's unique rural historic and and uh and natural character. So take a look to see. A concern, a a thought is this, though. If you look at the moratorium ordinance, this is something the chair brought up at the last meeting. What in particular are the deficiencies or issues that are driving this? The moratorium ordinance spoke in some generalities that the ordinances are inadequate. To review growth. And that public. Facilities are inadequate to accommodate growth. But when you look at what it is in particular, it was looking at. Water. Uh whereas the proposed expansion of this existing non-conforming use. Which seeks to add park model fixed placement units, water park facilities, large recreational place structures, dining and restaurant facilities and expanded bathroom and shower facilities. Has the potential to consume vast quantities of water that may have a detrimental effect. Of water supply and neighboring wells and the overall watershed in the town, including Anderson's Lake and Bod Brook. And whereas the proposed expansion of this existing non-conforming use. May produce mass quantities of septic and pool wastewater that may detrimentally affect environmentally sensitive protected resources city food wetlands, streams. Shoreland, uh burnout pools and and water wildlife habitats, including potential spill overs into surrounding waters such as Anderson's Garden Lake. Basically, the concern was focused on water, whether it's the lake. Wells, groundwater, individual water supplies, the threat of of that a potential development of additional. Or non-conforming campground space uh could pose to those water bodies and those water resources. But this draft ordinance is talking about perhaps uh. Not allowing glamping, which is an industry trend in campgrounds, not allowing. Uh many improvements, which is a trend in some campgrounds. The moratorium ordinance didn't seem aimed at economic attributes of campgrounds, but as water impacts. So, you know, just these are certain things to to be thinking about.
Doesn't have Jim, I I I don't think that necessarily, I'm gonna disagree there, push back a little bit on that.
Guys. Please, like the audience, it's his time.
This meeting, I am the chair, everyone. The board, at least I would like to hear our lawyer's input. He is the person that have grown with the most expertise regarding ordinances. He is hired by the town to provide us with that expertise. And this is a time for us to hear this expertise, and I would also encourage the moratorium committee to use this as an opportunity. To hear what somebody who works in this field has to say, okay? I understand meetings take time. That is probably coming to a planning board meeting, so please have some patience. Please be quiet. Until Jim is done and we will have discussion afterwards. Um thank you.
Yeah, I'll wrap this up later. I spoke too much already. Uh. A problem was identified. In the moratorium ordinance and the voters adopted that moratorium ordinance so that an ordinance could be amended or created to address the problem. The problem was water. The impact on water, largely, when you look at that uh the whereas clauses and the preempt. The draft that is before you. Addresses water quality issues and it addresses more, it addresses the form of. The campground and campground expansion or campground renovation, it addresses. Both uh invasive species on boats of. And if you look at the comprehensive plan. It does not identify campgrounds as being the source of water threats in the watershed. Instead, it talks about nutrient pollution and says sixty percent of it. It is outside our control. It identifies non-point sources and those are existing dwellings. Possibly the existing campsites, but also existing homes that were all built in areas that you couldn't build in today because of shoreline zone. Things that were built before nineteen seventy-three, septic's placed too close to the water, unpaved roads, phosphorus is coming off on the gravel areas. So, uh just. Think through those things that are in your comprehensive plan is my suggestion. Uh. Think about what was the problem that was identified. Does it solve the problem? Do you want to go into additional issues? I'm not saying you can't, I'm just saying it's, these are beyond. Necessarily what was raised in that. And in the end. Take a look at that ordinance. Take a look at the report, take off the comprehensive plan. I'm not telling you what to think or how to come down on it, just that there are issues here to think about. And in the end, uh. There has got to be a draft as presented by the committee. And the board has to review it and make a recommendation to the select board. And to the voters, if this goes forward. That's basically it. And I I'm again, I'm not taking sides. I'm not trying to say that it's wrong or whatever. I pointed out. Few issues that really need to be addressed. In order to make this a complete draft, this board would have the ability to talk about, think about the other issues.
Question for Chip that I have, listening, listening to that, because I I took notes through there, a lot of moving parts. Right, a lot of moving parts, a lot of effort that's gone into coming up with the draft and. You know, now it's now it's three D chess as we're looking at this. Is it within the scope of our third party that we're we're contracting right now to take a look at? I think it's within the scope of the organization, I forget the name of the guys who work with.
No, that's that's separate.
We're looking at the existing, but they wouldn't be able to look in.
We paid them quite a few bucks, yeah, but right now their thing is to work on organizing, straightening out some of the problems it's talking about. When this exercise first started. Did very good mental on how. It could progress and made suggestions on progression. One of those suggestions was to hire. A plan of zoning planning professional to work with them. And that would have been, I think, the third party, third person.
Yeah.
That would help out, and it's not too late to do something like that, I guess, or might be, I don't know, but that was a suggestion then. That other thing is a whole different ballgame, much wider, much deeper and. Quite frankly, their their mission will be done at the end of the year. And if they want to be, you know, if you want to pay for them, they probably could do this, but. Going off the timeframe of this.
And I know you want to jump in, but I mean, when you, one of the first things you brought up was almost the repointing. Of this draft, when it gets to a point, well, if it got to a point. As we're trying to get it to a point, repointing it from the subdivision ordinance up to supporting land use, right? Um the appropriate way to do it, but I'm I'm now trying to, as we're all in this room, we've all been interested in trying to get to a finish line. Um I'm trying to think, what if, what's the smart? Most direct path, maybe we can only take one bite of the elephant at a time here with then with a big picture view. That you kind of outlined on your recommendation, but the big picture should look like, but if we if we're gonna move in. Individual steps and not delay this forever. Um and we try to figure out what are those first two or three steps that we can logically take. Within the mere real terms, so that we can get this to a point where we say, okay. We just improved things, we got it to here. We should pick up a separate effort now to potentially look at the the larger. Uh problem that we've got, but I I. Ideally, look at the whole thing, but I don't know that we've. We have the time.
Here's the concern, if you if you were to just amend. Eh eh the mobile home park and RV ordinance. Just amended. It's still a separate from. Separate from zoning and you still could have mischief created because they're two separate documents that don't always sync up. And and somebody might try to. I'm not, somebody might try to use that.
Yeah.
Yes, so, yeah, can I ask? Um. When you talk about. I I understand that ideally, mobile and parking RV ordinance would be part of our land use ordinances, part of our zoning ordinances, is that. Sort of a historical like bit of completely like we're stuck with this, or is it practical? Like, could we just take this and make? How much? Contortion would be required to make this. A piece of our zoning ordinance, is that a practical path or is that entirely separate process?
You could amend the zoning ordinance to create some new performance standards that would absorb these.
Would that be an entire rewrite or could be essentially?
Would be an amendment, not a complete rewrite. We could put the existing content, like. Pretty much, uh it might require some contortions or whatever, you have just. It could be done. The question is, who's going to do it?
Exactly.
Okay, and if that was done, then that could be included in the project that's being done to. Get this organized right by the organization we. Contracted with.
Who suggested that? Who suggested that?
Well, it was, it was it was in the map on the select board that decided to hire somebody, so um. Okay, so I'm gonna suggest we. Leave that as a thing to think about, potentially how that it might be desirable to have this in the Zarian ordinance and potentially to. Explore how we could put this content into the government running ordinance, it would be more harmoniously with the existing stuff, but I'm. Gonna suggest that we not talk about that right now, because. This content is relevant by the way, is my understanding, so I would suggest we focus on the content.
Content of the amended.
The content, yes.
Resident trying to integrate the two is what you're saying.
That we not take that on as an issue right now, that we keep that as.
But if we don't, if I understood Jim and I'll address this to him. If we don't do that, then we've got some confliction going on between our land use or our zoning ordinance. We're gonna campground, and so therefore. The work that they may have done, which we haven't allowed them, I don't, I it seems like we're asking a lot. Of this group, but that's my opinion. And I think if we don't address this right now, it may not get addressed. And so therefore, and and I agree with Jim, what he said, this was the moratorium was about water. I I tend to get that too, and I heard uh several instances, I I was even gonna ask about. Impervious, they we defined impervious a little bit different in than our current. Uh ordinance says we we added compacted gravel, which that seems minor, but when you count it in all the. Uh campsites is compacted gravel is gonna make a big difference, uh significant, I think. Sure, they tried to study that when we were first considering. Some application, so I guess what I'm saying is that I I don't know that we can just pass this up and say we can't. Do this now, can we? Or it sounds like it's it's just who does it, who's gonna do it is the issue. I think our CEO is not in his head, so he's agreed to do it.
No, he is not, doesn't he?
No. Maybe not.
If you could agree upon what standards need to be changed. Through this mobile home park ordinance.
Okay.
It could be a. It won't be easy, but it it could be done, that you could take those out as performance standards and and amend the zoning ordinance, it wouldn't be a complete rewrite of the zoning. To be an amendment.
Performance standards, for example, I I gotta understand my own one.
How many feet, how much pervious?
Yeah, the feet, the the number of sites, is that a performance standard? All of those numbers are performance standards.
Right.
So if we can agree that those numbers are either. Valuable or useful or whatever we have.
Taking these pages and inserting them into the into the zoning ordinance. Again, somebody would have to do it. Uh but if you know what it is you want to add. The mechanism of adding it is not so great a problem.
And I might suggest to correct me along, Jim, but. My my thought is that the most productive way might be to. Focus on the on these revisions essentially as trying to establish those performance standards.
Okay.
Accepting that for the moment. We do have, you know, we do have these two meeting documents, which can be potentially great, but that is already the case. So we're not necessarily, you know, we're attempting to, the more the committee is attempting to improve that.
Not exacerbate.
It's not, right, you know, it may not fix everything, but if it is an improvement, then that's successful. And the planning board can, in the future. Say this should be part of the zoning ordinance, let's take these standards, and that becomes more of an administrative. How do we fill these can, we're maintaining the same content. We just want to merge these documents and that's something that can potentially happen separate from.
But when you get an application, Andrew?
Yes.
Uh what this does is gives us defining um. Limits, if you will, on what's allowed for a campground in our community or. Subdivision in campground. So if we don't have those defining limits in our land use ordinance. But just in the campground, is that gonna be sufficient or is it gonna be challenged? By an applicant, well, understandably so.
It it could be, and perhaps the. The first step is to get agreement on the standards and then the second step would be, okay, now how do we integrate that with the. Ordinance and then now let's recommend that to. So that you have something that's more airtight.
And clean up any inconsistencies.
Right, yeah. And I think that would serve everybody's uh purpose and interest. Better than to have two standalone documents that could be conflicting, that might be. Interpreted by someone or argued by someone to create an issue that maybe we don't see or don't agree with.
And we can look to take on that follow-on issue that the day following. The we actually, but the ordinance is in effect, right, it's immediately following.
If you could make that part of the recommendation, select for the top of the. So. Then do people feel good about the idea of focusing on revisions to the ordinance now, the content and trying. For instance, where to establish those. To look at the particular performance standards proposed by the moratorium committee?
Yes. Let's get a.
Now, it started this exercise when?
Nineteen.
Uh when did, when did the uh. Committee first started to work?
June fourth was when the select board appointed the committee, I'd say June fourth would be the day.
Okay. Under the ordinance, the uh in the date, the select board directs us to review it, we have a hundred twenty days.
Okay.
We could take, we could take longer, I think if everybody agrees, because we're moving in a positive direction.
Well, let's see where we, I guess the yes, the question will be whether we. Whether we schedule a public hearing for the next meeting or decide we want yet another discussion meeting. Um but just because we have a public hearing doesn't mean we can't have further discussion from the board, so. Um. I guess. First thing, I would like to. So speaking to the moratorium committee, um. The part of this process is that we don't actually require planning board approval. You know, you can bring this directly to the select board.
Um that's to go through, I was suggested.
It does, for a suggest, right.
It's not binding.
Right, that it is not binding, you don't have to take our feedback. Would it be helpful to take some time now to hear more feedback from the board? I can take one comment from the.
Question, I thought the difference between ordinance and zoning. Who is responsible for organizing zoning, that you guys or the the select board?
It's your land use ordinance that has been built over the years.
In many, well, in many towns, there's a zoning. In many towns, there's an ordinance review committee, so whatever is needed.
So it's separate from a planning board or a select board or?
I, the the planning board will review. Any draft zoning ordinance or amendment. And make comments on it and make a recommendation on that draft to the select board and then it goes to the voters.
I just wanted to know what the, something that changed on an ordinance into a zoning and.
Zoning, zoning is just a type of ordinance, it's a zoning ordinance and. And there's also subdivision ordinance, you know, that those, they're all separate ordinances, but they were adopted by town meeting. And for any zoning ordinance, it it comes before this board for these, you know, for the members of the planning board to review it, take public comment. Uh make a recommendation.
Well, shouldn't the subdivision, shouldn't the subdivision ordinance also be incorporated then?
No, the subdivision ordinance is separate, you're you, it's pretty clear that you're following those standards here. It's it's the coordination between this and zoning, particularly when you're trying trying to deal with things like consistency with the comprehensive plan. These really, these performance standards and dimensional standards really belong in a zoning ordinance, that's where you find them. That's where you find them for all the other uses that are permitted in town.
But that's confusing, aren't aren't their performance standards in the subdivision ordinance?
There are, but they are for a large scale development, not for the small development on single lot.
But but if the logic is that all regulation. Of performance standards should go in the zoning ordinance, then why would the subdivision ordinance also have to go in?
Well, I'm just gonna say right now that that is not for the board right now, we're not, but. Well, I'm just gonna say right now that that is not for the board right now, we're not, but whether it's a subdivision ordinance.
Why, why, it's, I don't get it, I'm sorry.
Typically, you will find a subdivision or incident, the performance standards that you'll find with regard to the subdivision ordinance are things like road standards. That apply to an entire large development that you don't concede in this, you know, in zoning ordinance. And so you, you know. A subdivision is a development, zoning is dividing a town up into segments, into districts. And having separate. Standards for each district. They are different, it's zoning and planning. Subdivision site plan, planning. Zoning. Individual districts and uses, and that's just the way it it's all over the state, under state law and under the way it's practiced in the municipalities.
Okay, I'm gonna. So I'm gonna shut down that conversation, because if anybody would like to bring a proposal to merge the subdivision ordinance into the land use ordinance. We'd be happy to talk about that sometime in the future, but that's not within the scope of this meeting. Um, so the committee has said that they would like to hear feedback from the board on this latest set of revisions. Do members of the board? Have feedback? That they would like to share.
I need more time to review with the attorney gave us in the memo.
Okay.
Would mean. Time.
Yeah, I mean, we, even if we schedule a public hearing, you will still give the last question to that next meeting, um. I, as always. Have things to discuss, if nobody else has, uh, I I tried to organize it in themes this time, that perhaps the. Board can weigh in, weigh in a bit, and the ordinance committee. So, uh, and a couple of them you touched on, um. One of the first things that struck me was removing RV parked from the title, and I guess I just wanted to. Do you see any potential issues with that, Jim, is that it it sort of logically makes sense, but it also felt like a?
It it does make logical sense, because it's just a form of campground, uh, it's a campground with RVs in it.
Okay, so we're good on that.
Does it, yeah.
Um. Can I speak to that on the RV resort? It seems like. To me, there is a difference now between what was we defined as a campground. And what is now an RV resort.
But we're saying there isn't.
Like, we're, we're saying there is.
No, we're gonna call it a campground, I don't care if you put the. It's a campground.
Could further define it, I suppose, too.
Well, the moratorium committee was suggesting that it was better just to call them all campgrounds.
Yep, I agree with that. All right, we'll call it all campground.
One, one, since we're talking about like maybe Trent fix a big problem, one of the things that we noticed, and you'll you'll see. This is the town of Reedfield's land use ordinance, this is the town of Wayne's zoning ordinance, so maybe you can see that. There's some problems with the existing zoning ordinance, that if you really needed to try to tackle everything comprehensively, would be a good idea. But we can't obviously deal with all that, but the distinction that doesn't exist in the existing regulation at Wayne. Is the distinction between a campground and a wilderness campground, which we found to exist in lots of other land use ordinances. And I think that's a crucial distinction that needs to be considered here.
Well, that actually does admit another one of my points is, so wilderness campground. Tent camping, presumably. Um, a lot of these regulations, I I don't know if anybody does go and try to create tent campground areas, but many of these seem like they would be. Not necessarily super applicable to a purely tent campground, like perhaps the sizes would be excessive, et cetera. Um. So when you were looking at these ordinances, most other, many other towns had separate. Requirements for wilderness. Campgrounds.
What they mostly said was. These are the regulations and they don't apply wilderness campgrounds. Because wilderness campgrounds have a far less impact. And the campsites are usually further spread out, there are no amenities, there's no. Pool and restaurant and store and all that, there might be a little store, but they're really wilderness camp. Campgrounds that are quite remote and spread out. Um, whereas campgrounds. The distinction between a campground and a resort campground no longer exists. People come with RVs and pop-up trailers, and they're all going to the same places with the pools and the. Other amenities, so that was the distinction, that's where we came down, pull out wilderness campground, and let's maybe talk about that separately. But everything else is kind of one of, one of a piece.
Yeah, and and to piggyback off of that with resorts, we we scoured campground ordinances. To find out distinctions between resorts and there really aren't any, um. And to try and find a definition of a resort with regards to ordinances, zoning ordinance. Um, couldn't find any, we were not about to come up with the definition for that. So we felt that was all encompassing under that campground.
And so was there any interest in including some language around those campgrounds? Uh, with the idea that, for example, those would be.
Sure, sure.
Much in accordance with the comprehensive plan and that they are. Plus for some economic development, very low impact.
Yeah, we just didn't, weren't sure whether that was in our scope to. Make that suggestion, although we noted it in our report and said that's the way a lot of other towns did it. A good examples is on, is on page one oh eight of the refield land use ordinance. And the way they handle it is that it's, it's, it's within the performance standards of campground, but then there's a separate definition section that says. Yeah, there's campgrounds, but then there's wilderness park campground, which is then sort of defined. So, so by creating that separate definition, you automatically distinguish it from everything else.
That makes sense, I mean, I, yeah, like, to me, that seems like it could be useful, because. As it is, it seems like you're essentially making those impossible, like this would, it would make them impossible. I mean, our current ordinance might make them difficult, but this would make it even more difficult for a wilderness campground, um. To exist without some sort of. Exception. I at least would be interested. Just rest of the board have thoughts, disagreements?
I agree.
Thank you, I'm sorry, good morning. I guess another broad theme that I saw here was, and we brought this up a little bit before, there's a number of sections which essentially need for us to state that. State regulations apply. And. My sort of concern thought process here is that. As we clarify, we clarify the state regs. They clearly apply. If we said they didn't, they still would. And sort of in the interest of. Revenue? Revenue, and I'll think like, because I think one of the things that makes there to be so much feedback about this is that, like, there's a lot of red, there's a lot of red and blue. And. Yeah, so the mandate from the moratorium was fix the existing. Fix the existing issues, and so sort of my inclination is. Whether state regs apply was not an existing issue, because they definitely apply. And we don't, we don't enforce state regs, the state does. And so sort of this language, which is perfectly true and not harmful, um. My inclination is that it might be better not to have it both limited scope of the changes, and also just for clarity in terms of like making. Sure that all the language in this ordinance. Is actually meaningful and belongs there, rather than just sort of like boilerplate, like you're not following. State rules. Um, does the board?
I interject, yes.
I think there's one misnomer in what you're just saying right now. The way things happen is the state makes regulations. They strongly suggest that towns, municipalities, bring them into their land use ordinances, to their. Regulations within the town. One thing that is allowed when that happens, and it's very clear in shoreland zoning. And I think you brought it up very nicely, is the town's allowed to make things more restrictive. Okay, or more to the point of the spirit of the legislation, okay? Which, you know. So what I'm saying to you is. We do regulate the state ordinance, it's because if we don't incorporate it ours. Towns list to follow it. I still have to enforce it. We bring it into our ordinance. Then I definitely have to enforce it at all. That's where the board has, uh. Not a duty, but has the ability. To again tweak it, so it's if you want to. To make it more to the spirit of the ordinance, now that might sound a little hinky to you, but with land use. Obviously, the spirit is to. You know, save the lakes, save the greenlands and everything, that's the spirit of it, so you can make it more restrictive, state allows that. If it's in terms of auxiliary dwelling units and everything. You can make it, you know, the spirit of that is to increase housing and everything. So it it just turns it around the other way, you know, you can make it so it's more to the spirit of that. But my point is, is that, yes, we do enforce state regulations.
Okay, well, so what I'm. I'm not so much speaking as to adopting into ordinance, what I'm saying is like, things like here where it simply says. They shall meet all the requirements of state statutes, licensing requirements, including the Department of Health and Union Services, then recreational, wilderness parks. Um, they must obtain all their permits from the Department of Environmental Protection. My understanding is that doesn't change, and whether they say that or not, whether we say that or not. All those applications still.
They still have to do it, right?
That doesn't actually change your job. Having that.
No, but in reviewing an application. That's one of the parts of reviewing the application, was this done to meet those standards?
So Andrew's saying, do we need to repeat that? Does it need to say that?
Sometimes it helps, sometimes it's redundant, but again. Whether it's there or not, okay?
Could that be on a completeness checklist that you would use?
Cause that's more.
Whether their application is ready.
Right.
We have to have this lot of application, et cetera. Yes, so. I guess that. That is my thinking, like, it doesn't. I'm not violently opposed to it, it doesn't harm anything, but my preference would be to have the language based sort of. As much as possible limited, limited to things that actually have. Impacted meaning, rather than. Restating the things which are true, but yeah, but I feel there's other feelings, thoughts, disagreements.
I think we can, that might be something we collectively agree. Table it, I don't know how many times it it might have the reference back to the state laws in the draft ordinance. We can go through and count them.
I have them all.
I was gonna say we can count them, if it's significant. Then we could say, look, we'll save three pages in this document if we did this, and it's kind of redundant. Um, but why don't we prioritize right now the things that you think are material, because we can, we can decide on this one.
Well, they can decide, but that. And yeah, and that's, again, this is my thought, you can take it and listen or not listen, but that's.
Just, I appreciate that, just quick feedback, I mean, if part of the goal is to to try to get. Um, an ordinance or a set of regulations that is more conforming to what current standards are. Uh, we'll just note that, um, you know, the the reason, and maybe we can pare back in some areas. But the reason why we thought it was important to put that in there is virtually every other land use ordinance that we looked at. Specifically calls those things out, and we were surprised. We educated ourselves, we didn't even know that the Department of Health and Union Services had regulations on this. Until we started doing research into it, so for example, in refield, it says. Each campsite shall comply with a more restrictive of the, as Chip said, of the following requirements or the requirements of the state of Maine Department of Human Services. Regulations for ten recreational vehicle parks and wilderness recreational parks. Chapter two oh five or is later revised, and then it's got a whole list of how the state regulates. Picnic tables, telephones, fire extinguishers, lavatories, all that stuff.
With once, like, um, once or throughout each section of the. Of the subordinates.
I mean, it's not certainly, yeah. I I can, I hear, I hear, like, if you're. If everyone else is doing it. I still don't necessarily throw with, but I like, I understand that we don't necessarily want to have novel. Now, we'll approach, there are a lot of things on ordinance language which is heavily repetitive, but I obviously. Think it's kind of productive, but that's an issue without the right agencies. So. I believe that is something that I, you know.
The idea of putting that there is to put people on notice what's required. So the the question is, is it something that's better in a checklist that Chip gives to an applicant, say, hey, you want to do this, here's what you gotta do. Before it'll come before the board, or is it better to have it in the ordinance, and that's something that probably can look at last.
Okay. Uh, a point which, um. Jim did bring up in one. A one four. Um, when. It's sort of suspended, something that would be applied along with these requirements, the way in zoning ones and section eleven. The bit about it must meet the subdivision standards under the town of Wayne subdivision regulations, um. Yeah, that was my understanding as well.
Yes.
That you can agree with that. Great. There. And I have some more thinking ones that maybe I can send later as a. Back to changes. Just so we don't get to, yes.
I just want to mention, I just. Saw what Jim wrote about land suitable for development, if I recall, and there is a good. Um. In the review, they do define how you determine what is land suitable for development. Which Jim pointed out is not defined. To be that's, that's a necessary thing in determining what's eligible for development. Like wetlands were excluded and stuff like that. It's not in ours.
Didn't see it in there. You have subdivision long, subdivision. Somewhere along the line, there should be some definition of what it is that would be counted as land suitable.
And what is not counted, you can't count, it's like resource protection or. Those zones cannot be counted in or roads.
I thought we did.
Yeah, that is on there.
It is, yeah.
And in fact, we thought that was a significant.
We did get it in this revision.
Yeah, well.
Sorry. Too much reading.
See if we can find it, but the whole, the whole idea was. Getting to the issues that were raised in the ordinance about, um, protecting natural resources and.
Right.
Uh, potential issues for watershed, uh, help and so on. We, we saw in many, many others, uh, land use ordinances. That you 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 focus on the concept of density by looking at what is developable land.
Hmm.
So that you take out and protect the areas that that shouldn't count toward developable land. And we added stuff like state archaeological sites.
Right, I saw that.
Protected areas and other.
I've got it, it's right here.
Go ahead, read it.
Um, it's under the specific regulations. For campgrounds, um, section C, number three. Um, areas of land supporting wetland vegetation and land below the normal high water mark shall not be included in the calculating the land area. Per acre available for a campsite. Um. And then it goes on, in addition, the following areas must be excluded in calculating the maximum density of. Seven campsites per acre area designated as significant wildlife habitat by the habitat by the Department of Island Fisheries and Wildlife. And archaeological sites identified by state historical preservation commission, such areas may not contain any building structures or other impervious services. Except for footpaths subject to plan board approval.
So turn that into a land suitable for development or not suitable for development definition.
Okay.
And and that way, whenever you have use that turns throughout, it will be shortened for that.
Is it really unsuitable for the development?
Uh, land determines suitable for development or land suitable to use slightly different terms throughout, but.
Okay.
Pick a term, stick with it, define it, and that way we're referring to throughout.
Couple of points in the definitions, um. The definition of campground. It struck me that that definition seems like it would apply to a. Like disco course for hiking trails, because there's no internet specifically about people. Spending the night, it simply says. The opening open area, not for character, these are recreational purposes. Um.
No, that's, that only adds to what the existing definition of. Campground is in the zoning ordinance, which makes clear.
Yeah, it's temporary, and the area you're attracted to accommodate two or more parties and temporary living quarters, including but not limited to. To tents, recreation vehicles or other shelters.
So the term temporary living quarters comes out of the existing Wayne zoning ordinance.
So what is this adding that, right? What is, what is this, what is the new definition here at, what is, what is it addressing in the existing definition, I guess? I'm not sure what it. I I find it a bit confusing, because when I read it, it says in addition to that, it sounds like this is also a campground. Anything which is under unified ownership and primarily is rotational purposes, like. I assume there was a hole you were trying to fill with the existing definition.
All right, let's. I think it might, we were going to try and include the fact that. I think it might, we were going to try and include the fact that, um, campgrounds are no longer just places where people spend the night. That there are recreational activities and other amenities and other things going on, I think that's where we were going with that.
I guess what I might try to consider is just like, is that someplace that doesn't have those, since like it's still a campground, so do we need to include those in the definitions? Like if. If a campground just have.
But the fact that those things are there doesn't make it not a campground.
Right, I think, you know, those would probably, in, in my mind, be considered accessory uses or accessory structures. As a customary or incidental, incidentally, company of use, so that you, you wouldn't necessarily have to. Do something in addition to that definition. And then for me, if I'm looking at the definition with this additional piece in, in the campground, and I'm trying to reconcile that. Is that the same campground that's listed in the table of use? Cause it's different now, it, you can see where a mystery can happen. And that's, it's going to be rely on the zoning ordinance definitions for these terms and use safer. Than by trying to separately define them or additionally finding them.
So if, if we, and I can't, without going through this right now, but if we. Think that a definition in the zoning ordinance should be beefed up a little bit, we think that is a recommendation? Is that where it should be beefed up as opposed to in this ordinance?
Yeah, that would be the appropriate place that everything is.
Assisted in there.
Right. Uh, because ultimately, what would be nice is to be able to tuck all of these into the zoning ordinance.
So, so should. So should this ordinance even have, you know, I'm trying to think of, if we're really want to work towards incorporating. This into eventually into the zoning ordinance. Should it be recommended part of this process that all of these definitions actually end up in the zoning ordinance? And not at all in this particular campground ordinance?
You might want to look at it as a, uh. Let's try to use the zoning ordinance definitions, and if they need to be changed, let's show where they need to be changed, how they need to be changed here. Or what needs to be added to the zoning ordinance to make this work, for example, access road is something that you don't, it isn't in the zoning ordinance. And so that's something that would be new, and if you think that's required in order to make all this work, then that would be something if we want to add to the zoning.
To the zoning ordinance.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Break it up for now so that it's understood.
Okay, okay.
And again, just for information purposes, in the Reed Field Land Use Service, which was adopted a year ago. Um, in the performance standards campground is defined as quote, an area or tract of land under unified ownership, which we thought was an important concept. On which accommodations for three or more parties for temporary occupancy are located, another important concept, or may be placed. Including tents, recreational vehicles and recreational facilities, and which is primarily used for recreational purposes and retains an open air or natural character.
If you, I mean, for my concerns, if you did, if it was important to keep that in there, like, just a different wording, such as like. Um, in addition to the definition in part two, article three. Uh, recreational uses and, you know, like, may also be present, something to kind of make sure they clear that it is additive. Rather than, here are two definitions we can talk about.
Well, but if we're proposing any changes to definitions in the zoning ordinance. Should we be doing the zoning ordinance as the dictionary of terms and not be defining anything new in the? It was just sort of saying like, oh, like what we really need to is what.
Well, right, but what I'm saying, only when you need to, tell us that you want to amend the zoning ordinance definition diagram and how.
Right.
But if there's something that isn't in the zoning ordinance right now, tell us what needs to be added, and that would be.
So yes, we should think of the zoning ordinance as a dictionary.
I, I think that would be the better way to go. No definitions altogether later.
I thought that's what you were saying, some definitions are not present in zoning ordinance that we need in this one, but not redefining things that are already.
Right, not redefining unless they need to be redefined.
In which case.
And if they're new.
Those amendments to the zoning ordinance definition, tell me that you want to amend the campground one to say any tractor, uh, any area attractive land in unified ownership. You know, show, show that in language.
Again, it's a little hard to.
We got, he got a hand that has been up for quite a long time.
Um, I, I just thought before, they are asked to go down this road to the zoning ordinance. Can you just clarify, and I'm not familiar with the exact wording in the moratorium language. But are you asking them to go down the road and the zoning ordinance changes, is that within their scope that's been given to them by selecting? Because I hate to see them do all this extra work and then find out that it was beyond their scope that was given to them.
We're not asking the moratorium committee to start incorporating this into the zoning ordinance, that is something the planning board could consider after establishing. The substantive performance criteria that the moratorium committee is.
Yeah, and we're expecting that you are suggesting either definitions that need to be updated and amended, or things that aren't even.
Okay.
Uh, definitions right now aren't even defined.
One more quick public comment.
Yeah, just quickly, um, I would be concerned about the clarity and consistency. Of these definitions, um, because we're talking about campgrounds. I'm involved in a youth summer camp, and in reading all of these trying definitions and trying to figure out which are. I'm trying to figure out, other than my great concern for the health of the lake and the town and the economy, whether or not. These would apply to me, and it would seem to me that they wouldn't. Uh, because we're licensed under something's different than the state, and yet with all of these moving parts in these definitions. There might be some unintended consequences that. Well, let's talk about that for a moment.
Can I ask if you're from Camp Andrews?
Camp Andrews, okay. Does Camp Andrews Goggin have a, an annual license with the, the town?
Yeah.
Okay, because Camp Andrews Goggin is a, is a campground under the ordinance, even though it might separately be licensed by the state. It still is a campground for purposes of the ordinance. Well, we have a, a state license under youth camps, which is separate.
But that, for, under the, so the town, the way the state views, and it's in the way the town views it in terms of zoning. Can and is in this case separate.
Right, but again, in looking at all these different definitions, the first part says might be, and the second part says we can't be, so.
What's the part that, that says you can't be?
Permanent structures for sleeping purposes, we obviously have them. A hundred and some odd years.
So you would be a pre-existing non-conforming use? And so this would govern expansion, so your input would definitely be. Very, but I mean, I don't know if you talked to the moratorium committee, but you would be a. Okay, yeah, because I, my, my understanding, and, and it might be something that they want to talk with. You know, the town officer or Jim specifically more about is that this would apply, you're pre-existing, so. You know, as with all the campgrounds in town, it's not like they have to reorganize to meet this ordinance, but expansion would be governed. By this, and I don't know what zone you're in, but like. So these will very much apply to you. We, we don't have any. Yeah, we don't have a license from town.
But you're under the town's regulation.
You have a permit.
No.
No.
No, they don't.
You don't do an annual renewal permit, no town?
So we, we talked, because when we started looking at all these ordinances. The distinction of a youth camp or a summer camp is pervasive. There's a lot of ordinances that have that, and the state recognizes it as something totally different, and it's our feeling that. We should recognize it as something different, like a wilderness camp, that's different. Um, they can still be regulated under portions of this ordinance, but it's different.
Is there a difference between not for profit and for profit?
No, that, that didn't come out.
So, this is, I, I don't, I don't want to get, make the meaning too much specifically about this, this may be something that. Jim is acting as our town lawyer, town lawyer in this, in this instance, and. So either Jim or a regular town lawyer, you. Well, in general, for. Okay, you may want to talk to Tim specifically, I, I will say that my, like, the town has to have something like. Simply because the state uses it differently does not mean that it. If we say that it's not a campground, then no zoning, like, what's only applies to it, and so the town has to have some sort of zoning that it can consider it with, so if we want to have separate language.
But in the same way that we would pull out a wilderness park to be separate from. Uh, campground with all the amenities, that certain things would not apply to them, and in this, that would be the same for a youth camp. Certain things would not apply to them, the fact that permanent sleeping structures aren't allowed, I mean.
Well, well, one way to, again, if we're trying to look at how to really solve a problem. One thing we can certainly do and are more than happy to do is to make a suggestion about. How the existing regulatory structure can be improved by adding a definition of youth camp and explaining what's regulated and what isn't. With respect to that use, which we see is a different use than, uh, you know, typical commercial campground.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this, this is something that would be, I would, is this something that you could look at for a little bit?
We can, we can, we can work through this, but just when you look at the definition of campground as it is right now. Any area or tract of land to accommodate two or more parties in temporary living quarters, including but not limited to tents, recreational vehicles or other shelters. I mean, if you've got seasonal building, it's seasonally occupied, that will be, uh, you know, an other shelter. It may be regulated for one purpose by state law. But the question is, is that, for the town, is that land use something that is allowed on this property? That's what the zoning ordinance is looking at, it's, it's looking at something different, and so you could wind up having to get state permit and a local license every year. Now, it could be that the ordinance is written so that there's a lower level of restriction, like for the tenting campground. It, it might not be as restricted because there's no need to have such large campsite or certain things, and we could do something like that for your specific youth camp. That's something that could be done, we'll have to look at that, but it is a campground, and it should be getting a, a permit from the town on an annual basis. They do, you guys do, every time you put in a new building, right, to a major renovation, you come to us for permits because you are under our land use regulations. Okay, just a point.
But they don't get an operating permit as a.
They haven't apparently, but it doesn't, they should.
Well, I'm not sure that's true, but you may think so, but I'm not sure, I think it's a hole in the ordinance.
Suggest that because this is specifically about, this ordinance applies, you know, the ordinance is by definition applied to everyone in the definition cover, so. I would suggest that this is a specific issue that would be great for you guys to talk with our town lawyer about, see exactly where you fall and. We can, you know, continue to talk.
If it needs to be addressed in this process, then it can be addressed.
I mean, it's a big problem, Camp Andrews Goggin's been existence for a hundred plus years, they don't have camps. They have, how many youth camps there are too, I mean, let's do a little research on and find out what, how are youth camps viewed? Is it a state separate?
Yes.
So let's look at it, right.
You have to have a place.
Understood, but let's look at the precedent and see how it's handled elsewhere, rather than trying to come up with something novel.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm suggesting.
Put it in the parking lot to look at.
So. Another general thing, we've been. Thank you for bringing that up, by the way, I appreciate you guys speaking on. I, in, again, in the definitions, imperious surface, I guess this is another one that, because imperious surface is really an engineering definition. And it's used throughout ordinances, I have a lot of awareness around having a. Separate definition or independent definition of imperious surface in the, um. In this ordinance. Um, it said, there's a note here that it says not currently defined in the way in zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
But it is in the state DEP regulations, and I just got done with a, a series of seminars with that. And they've been changed lately, but the DEP regulates and has definitions of it, which they've just recently changed some, for example. Grass pavers, it used to be a great idea, you know, but they found out that they became imperious after a few years. But you can find all of that in the DEP regulations, which. We enforce and are covered under, you know.
So it's applied to shoreline zone.
Well, we're talking about, you know, camps on shoreline.
No.
Campground could be anywhere.
Okay.
So the imperious surface definition, the DEP pass is, uh, talking about compacted gravel. Applies within the two hundred fifty feet from the normal high water mark, short of a, a water body of seventy five feet of screen. Uh, it doesn't apply townwide, DEP doesn't have jurisdiction to it. And elsewhere in town, if you had compacted gravel on a gravel road, that would be considered imperious surface necessarily, or for a driveway. Or, well, I'll, I'll defer to check. Well, this town has so many water features, we're not just talking Andrews Goggin Lake, we're talking, we've got five or six lakes here. You also have lots of wetlands and other things, so that's why I kind of raised my eyes. It's, all I was pointing out is there is a definition there that I think is very healthy, and you'd probably salute it. And you might want to, you know, turn your eyes to that.
So should we put it in here because it's not in our zoning?
That's a thought.
Um, my, like, what I would.
Look at the DEP definition and.
And what I, I would also love to see is a recommendation that it go in the zoning ordinance, because I, to me, it seems.
Because that's going to be all.
Very inappropriate, well, particularly because this is a definition that is important throughout our ordinance, and have it only live in the mobile home, and this is not. The fact that it's not there is obviously not your fault, but having it only in the mobile home campground ordinance. We're good. Yeah, I, I would love to see a recommendation that we put in the.
Andrew, can I question you? Just so that we're clear here, the only reason we went through this whole exercise to amend the existing zoning ordinance. Is because that's what we have, we're, well, we're not here as a champion of a separate zoning ordinance for campgrounds. That's never been our position.
No, I, I'm not saying that you are, I'm just, this is not a criticism of you, I'm just saying. It's great that you put it in, but.
Cause we're going to use this.
It's ridiculous, we don't have one in the zoning.
Right, everything that you pull together, right, whether there are definitions that should exist, we're going to be looking to. The zoning ordinance to say, okay, you know what, let's suggest that these get incorporated there so that this new ordinance can refer to those definitions.
So can we keep, keep it in here for now until we get to a point where. Then there's the amendment to. The merging in the zoning ordinance and updating the zoning areas, I don't want to pull it out of here. If you're not going to add it to the zoning ordinance for another three years.
Think, suggestion, you tell me if this makes life easy, but potentially have a section in what you're working on where the definitions are there. But refer the individual sections of the document to that, to that section, this way it's easy to pull in, pull out. Know what I mean? Yeah, I got it, we can do that. One of, one of the things I think that might help is, we, we're going to stick with the existing form just because we can't throw this baby out at this point.
Yeah, right.
But we can, we can note in an, in another version. Um, where it might fit in the existing zoning ordinance, and we can also know. Wh- what we think is something that's in the existing amen, proposed amended ordinance. That properly to us, at least, subject to what your lawyer says, seems like a performance standard.
Yeah.
Like that you would want to actually incorporate.
Might put that in the comments, call.
Right.
This little bubble.
And I, I will throw out there, just for me, if I, if I were going to approach it, because this is something that we need to use. For any application, calculation, or the circles, I would actually rather not have it in this ordinance. Because I think we should be using the same standard everywhere, and so if we don't have it defined one in our ordinance, and we're going to reach for a state standard. I would really rather be doing that everywhere, whatever mechanism, until we have one in zoning ordinance, whatever mechanism we're using. I would like to be standard across any application we receive, because we can't, it is so fundamental to like engineering plans, like being able to say this is a previous surface, this is not. And we need to be following state definitions of those, and we can't be reaching for different standards. Depending on the type of application.
Aren't, aren't we trying to do, I guess I'm confused, Andrew, because what we're trying to do is get these that. Move it as I think Jim suggested into the zoning ordinance, and our purview here is the planning boards suggest. After we review what they compiled, what. After we review what they compiled, what maybe should go into the planning or interior. Land use ordinance, is that correct? When we go to the, to the select board with our recommendation.
The distinction that I'm proposing here.
Saying, don't redefine impervious.
You're saying, don't put it in this.
Saying, because I'm saying this doesn't, the lack of a definition of impervious. Doesn't really have anything to do specifics. That's a problem with our entire land use ordinance. It is not specific to the mobile home campground ordinance. And so I'm saying.
Okay.
Let's fix that, but to have sort of a, to address it only in this little piece. Creates a discrepancy that I find potentially dangerous. And so I'm saying, don't put a little Band-Aid on it here that can then create friction later. Let's just leave that out and say that that's an issue with our zoning ordinance everywhere and address it there. That's my, that's my.
Do, do word find in Wayne zoning ordinance, impervious does not show up. Uh, in the Wayne zoning ordinance.
Even under the shoreline zoning provisions?
My words, my word find does not pop up with anything.
In, in the Wayne zoning ordinance doc, um. Is not, we could have spelled it.
That's what I was gonna say, let's just spell.
Well, even if you put I M P, just try I M P.
Very big. So a- again, I'm totally not.
I M P E comes up with nothing.
This is not a reflection on the moratoriums word. It's my, this is my proposal to deal with something which is a deficiency in our. So I, there are I M Ps, but there's.
One way of looking at impervious surface is if it's a, a non vegetated surface. And so under the shoreline provisions in the R four. In your ordinance, it says the total area of all structures, parking lots and other non vegetated surfaces within the shoreline shall not exceed twenty percent. In today's shoreline zoning ordinance, it'd say the impervious. Surface of those spots shall not exceed twenty percent. And then the definition that you have in that Jim is talking about would appear. So. It, it's meant to apply to the shoreline zone. Uh, your draft would apply this idea of impervious surface and a limitation to all campgrounds, whether they're in the shoreline zone or not.
But that's where the dominoes start to fall. So if we actually do a really good definition of impervious surface and fix it. Then you have to go through and amend all.
Well.
Text in the zoning ordinance to use that terminology.
I think what, what would happen if we applied it to the zoning ordinance, there's an existing state definition that applies to all shoreline zoning. And that applies to a campground in the shoreline zone. And that's really where we're most concerned with impervious surfaces anyway. That, that's why there's a separate definition for it in the shoreline zone because you're near water. We're concerned with runoff and impervious surfaces. And so. There is already a definition of impervious surface that applies when we're within the shoreline zone. That is a definition from the state that you referenced. So that already applies when we're outside of the shoreline zone. Then the state definition does not apply because the state only has jurisdiction in the shoreline zone. And so we would want a definition of, we would want an impervious, if we're going to limit. Impervious surface outside of the shorelands on that is where we would need a definition on our land use ordinance. And I, my argument is that campground, but by no means the only place that we would care about impervious surface. And so. My argument is that that's not specifically your name. To campgrounds and. And it worries me to have that one definition. I'm repeating myself now, but.
But it wor- but it worries me that it could take a very long time to get that corrected into the zoning ordinance. If we eliminate it from here.
I push back on your worry again, in this group that is codifying our current ordinances. Once they're done with it, it should make it much more simplistic to include whatever new. And it won't but just be campgrounds, anything else that we do to modify the ordinance. It'll make it easier to do that. And we, at that point, can also, you know, employ them to do that. But by taking apart our ordinance, putting it into code, you know, that's, you know, more specific and everything. Will be then, you know, able to do it faster and more efficiently.
Yeah, it's just enough in how I feel, but. Not, don't have to, definitely don't have to take it. Where are we at? Late.
Okay.
Um. All right, I guess. If we have time, there's two sort of more broad topics, not huge ones, but that I'd love to touch on and then we can talk about. One subject was there's some areas in which, um. There's legislation that, there's. Legislation seems to govern the sort of internal functioning of the park in a way that it seems like to me. It's more like in the regulations specifying screening between campsites. And like the number of screen, temporary screen structures that are allowed, that. To me, reading them seemed like an internal park concern, like if there's screening or not, that doesn't really affect people outside of the park. If people want screening, if they're not screening, they won't go to the park. You know, some mobile home parks, there's. RV parks lined up next to each other, people enjoy it. And so I guess. I- i- in sort of the spirit of limiting the. Um. Legislation to things that really address the concerns in moratorium. My question is, do we, do we need some of this legislation which seems to. Try to regulate. Think it might be overstepping in China, that doesn't have like environmental protect, that does not, is not environmental protection or really. Protecting the body of things like how many screened structures are allowed on site.
So cut, contrary to popular opinion that all we, that people think all we care about is like how this may affect other people in town or the lake. We actually thought our job was to see. How should the town appropriately regulate this so that when people come to the town as visitors? They're having a safe and a, and reasonable and appropriate experience. And again, we drew on what we saw in lots of other ordinances that say. You know, we don't, as a matter of policy, we don't want in our town a campground that looks like. A prison compound where they're lined up one after another with no, with no screening in, in between them.
Okay.
We, we thought that was something that was a benefit to the people who come to this town and want to use those facilities. That it makes it a more appro- appropriate and enjoyable experience for them.
And there also is.
And, and reduces the impact on the land because you have to, you have standards around how much you can clear cut to actually. Use to, to, for, for each campsite.
Yeah.
All of which impacts the water quality because every time you strip away vegetation, you're. Taking away the filters, you know, the water passes.
If you have a spec- specific amount of area allowed for a campsite, whether they spread them out, put them all next to each other, it's the same amount of trees.
I didn't, I don't, I don't follow.
If you say you can have a campsite that's this big. And you say, well, you have to have trees in between. It's like two trees in between. Whether you're putting them all together or spreading them out, it's the same amount of cleared area allowed, is it not?
But the, the, so that's a density requirement and we, we have. A standard in there for density per acre of developable land. We also have a standard in there that says of the five thousand square feet that you have to have as a minimum for each campsite. Um, only a certain percentage can be, um, cleared away to allow for the, the temporary. Uh, stru- the, the temporary living quarters to be placed on. So that, that does several things. It reduces the impact on the land. It provides natural scre- screening in between, um. So we, we, we thought those were all, you know, beneficial things.
And it is far easier if you are installing a campground to go in and level everything and just. Plump your park models and, you know, make your RV parking areas with absolutely no regard for leaving anything. Or planting something there. That's, that's far easier to do. And that's what we're trying to avoid because that is not good. For the environment, to, to cut down everything and just make a parking lot basically.
The objective was to allow the use, but to have it have the lightest impact or footprint on the land that it could.
Sure, and I'm, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't want to get too into the weeds and I can. Sure, I'm not top interpreted, but I, I think maybe the more productive ways to, I, I had not considered the idea of actually regulating like. To me, it felt overstepping to say we're gonna regulate what this campground can be. Cause like I was like, it's like Riverbend, for example, in Leeds. Which is kind of cute, people seem to enjoy being there. There's no screening in between them. And so I guess my question, one is like, do we want to say that someplace like Riverbend cannot exist? Two, Jim, is there any legal, like, are we allowed to go to some tough places? How they can internally run themselves?
All of this came from other places. We didn't make it up. We didn't make it up.
I know, but I'm still interested in Jim's.
You, you could regulate the, you could regulate the use, you can regulate the screening, you can regulate how it's done, uh. The question is, what's the problem you're trying to solve? The problem you're trying to solve. In, this is philosophical, but it's water quality. How does. You know, the, the decision that you want the lightest impact on the environment possible. In the clearing and provision of campsites achieve that end, I, I, you know. Maybe you want to do that. Do you want to design the project for people or do you want to let the market design the project within certain environmental conditions? That's really. You know, take a look.
When, when we define what's suitable for development, land suitable itself, that's gonna impact. A lot of this also is gonna. Restrict, I'm just asking you guys, isn't it then going to restrict? Uh, you know, they're not going to be cutting down trees and in that area that is. Either shoreline zone, if that's not considered developable, or wildlife preserve area.
There will be some of those protections, but you'll still be able to look at your, your acre and say, I'm gonna put in seven. Campsites and I'm just gonna level everything to make those seven camps.
And so just to go to your example, Andy, Ri- Riverbend, sure, that exists. I've been over there. I know exactly what it looks like. It's a pre-existing use. It's not in, in Wayne, but it's fine. It is what it is.
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the things we're working with Riverbend to do is to actually install, install. Shoreland vegetated buffers because look at the Dead River. It's disgustingly green.
Well, and that's shoreline buffers. I'm talking about buffers between campsites, but.
It's all the same thing.
Same thing.
I, 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 I guess I don't really agree there and that. I mean, I, I guess that does bring into a broader, like I will touch on, but not. Um, which are.
Don't forget folks, we have our land use ordinance, which is pretty darn strict. We have shoreline one thousand, which is incorporate our ordinance. Nobody's gonna come in and clear cut. In this town anymore for a campsite. It's gotta be heard by the planning. It's gotta be, if they, you know, if you don't like that, then it goes to the board of appeals and the board of select can always step in. But we have, we have really good rules right now intact for certain things like you're saying. I think Jim makes a good point that you, you know, you said what you wanted to fix and I agree. I think you've done a good job. But watch out because I do know from this experience and prior experience in other towns, other states. You can't legislate design, you can't legislate, you know. What, you know, what a business wants to do unless, you know, as long as it's fitting into the environmental. And the town's ordinances and that's, I think. You might be step, overstepping like Sid said.
So yeah, Wayne, Wayne does have good rules and, and we know how hard you guys weren't to enforce them and that's great. But that doesn't mean they can't be improved. I mean, I remember it, excuse me, remember.
I'd say that. I agree with you a hundred percent.
Remember when I came to you in the spring and said, gee, Chip, what's the story up on Morrison Heights? Where literally somebody clear cut from the road, two hundred feet down. And you told me there's nothing we can do about it because they, they didn't go, they, they're, they're, uh.
Right.
They, they didn't go down to a hundred feet in the shoreline. Well, that's an environment, that's an environment, two hundred feet. That's an environmental disaster what happened.
It's allowed under state and town laws and, you know.
That doesn't, that doesn't mean we can't fix it when we're trying to regulate this.
But now you're talking overall, concentrate on the mission.
Campgrounds are our mission.
Yeah, I understand.
Talking about.
Okay, I think we're.
Something they say, hey, this is highly recommended from an environment protection.
Right.
Let's, let's get clear on it because you've looked at it more than we have. So let's, let's get up to speed and see what that is.
And I, I think we can move on. Some things that are clear, hopefully, that are not.
Just, we also, we also envisioned what if, um, not just taking a piece of ten acres of woods and clear cutting it. Um, but what if there's already ten acres of existing field that someone wants to put a campground? You know, campsites and just line up those park models and have not a tree in sight. We did not think that was a vision of that, that, that fit into the character of this town. And so if you start with that premise of not, not a tree, just field. We thought that by putting in some buffers. Between the campsites, you know, between the, the campsites, um, would. Be more in. Yes, that's just, I mean, so we, we looked at it from that standpoint as well.
I, I, yeah, I, I hear that the day, I mean. And the, the danger that I see there's, you know, that is. A small group of us deciding the character of the town should be, whereas somebody else might say, I love doing this and, you know, I love being gell with gell with. My other RVs, but. So I'm just pointing out that that is subjective, but moving on to a couple of things that are a little more concrete, um, particularly. So the multiple screen, um, allowing only one screen structure, does that mean somebody couldn't have two like screen tents next to their? So they couldn't have two screen tents, like one over the picnic table and one over some chairs.
Campgrounds have specific, we sort of listened to what Jellystone is telling us about what they have on site. And they have their own campground, which pertaining to what they allow on their campsites. And I think that's appropriate.
Well, I guess I would wonder, do we need to legislate that though? Like, what, what is the town interested in saying that you can't have a screen over your picnic table and a screen over your chairs where you?
I think that they originally was that we didn't want permanent structures to be left. On site, like at the end of the year, they leave them behind. It would all could be temporary structures.
I think that the language says that you can't have more than one.
So that you could have a screen room. One, so he's questioning the one.
Why, yeah, what is the danger, I guess, of the environmental impact of having two screens?
Okay.
I'm just not sure what.
Right.
What that's getting us.
Especially if you were to have something in there and say that any temporary structures would have to be taken down at the end of the season.
Well, it already says.
I know it already does, so.
So.
And, and.
So the one.
Uh, it just feels like. Getting into their business that much on, um, something perhaps more substantive, indeed permitted use. Um, there's sort of a loss of the land use table here. Um. And my concern is, it's essentially an unstating the land use table. Um, and instead of glossing it, it's a race and a potential for alternative interpretation. Um.
And, or you don't get the nuance of your table.
Right, and I, 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 I guess because there is a fair amount of nuance and we've run into this and I know it's a sensitive subject, but. Around the idea of what kind of expansion we allow for pre-existing non-conforming uses. That that is defined in reference. Um, in the land use table and subdivision regulations, and I think. Lasting it here potentially, it, it conveys sort of what we want it to mean, but it, it creates a potential conflict of meaning with the actual. Land use table and subdivision, division regulations. And so I would much prefer to see. Um, just a straight reference to the money table, so that we have a single source of truth. For what is, what is permitted to us. And I know land use table is pretty clear and. That, yeah, that's my thing for itself. So just for, that, that is my thought.
So, so my understanding, just, just refer to, we're gonna still put, put that in there, but.
Like the first time, I would take out point one, if it were me, I would take out point one and two, just say that it's. In all zones, it's governed by article two, land use table on the way.
And if this ultimately gets tucked into the zoning ordinance, it will all be in one anyway. You won't need that.
It will all be. And again, if anybody else has opinions on what I'm saying, disagrees, thinks I'm an idiot, feel free to. Speak up.
I think a lot, so many of our questions are just centering around the conflict between the zoning ordinance. And this ordinance here, and we heard from Jim that like it really should be integrated. I just. I know that that's like a huge Herculean task, which is why we kind of like kicked the can down the road for quite a while about it, like, or maybe we just. Not, not even that we're kicking the can down the road, but that we haven't tackled it yet, but. It just seems like so many of these questions would be solved or like not so much of like a, a sticking point on these like individual small things if we. Made a plan to integrate it into the zoning ordinance. I don't even know what that looks like, you know, like. Could we make a recommendation? This is just throwing it into the wild. Who would we make a recommendation now as the planning board? That we recommend that the select. That we recommend that the select board hires this zoning professional. Even though they didn't, they chose not to do that, like, could we make that recommendation that they had of that person? We have already.
It's in progress.
Oh.
Well, I think she knows she's talking about the recommendation to have a ordinance professional work on this specifically.
Again, that can be done once they got the overall ordinance straightened out. That then that can be placed into there.
Yeah, I think I totally get that. I think I just, maybe I'm just not understanding where we are in the whole zoning ordinance thing like, and I'm just. If you have a timeline that is happening and it's like, it just seems like the timeline is coming up like for when. We want this to be in place and. I guess I have no, I personally have no understanding of what the timeline is for us addressing the zone. Peace, which seems like a huge piece of like this big daylight, like you were saying, in between. What we want and what we have.
If you answer that question, Chip, Chip, when when does the company that's compired to read pot of light and council? Pretend to have that ready. Q one twenty-five. So it would be ready for town meeting to adopt next year, absolutely. But that was that's June. So the zoning ordinance won't be in better shape until June.
Yeah.
And so the question is, do you want to try to integrate this now before? Or do we want to wait until June and then add this? And in the meantime, have the moratorium extended and extended and extended?
I think so. My my pitch just to speak to what you're saying, like I I totally hear you that like a lot of what I'm bringing up would not be an issue.
Well, not just what you're bringing up, but like, yeah.
But if it it was within. My my pitch is sort of like we're. Midway in this process.
Yeah.
And the fundamental of this process is figuring out what substantive changes we want to make. You know, see, some of these things that I'm saying here are procedural, like I would like. And part of my goal is to minimize those areas of conflict so that. It is easy to say like, here's what this says that is unique. You know, from. Why these ordinance, is that we're going to put it in land disorderness? But I think my pitch has been. Let's finish this process, we try to focus on the substantive changes and then we'll have this content. We're trying to.
Bite first.
Rather than reaching the process now, that feels to me more disruptive, I guess, I think, I mean.
Have an understanding of what the timeline is to make a zoning ordinance like like. Do we have to like create? I have no understanding of like what that takes and so like.
What I even talked about is our ordinance change right now. We're just, we're going to focus.
Could we concurrently start whatever tiny baby steps have to happen while this is also being? Like made exactly as we feel like it should be. I'm not saying I think we should do that. I'm asking if. Somebody else has a better understanding of that timeline.
I think. And I may, somebody correct me if I don't, but what we would, if we wanted to do that. We would probably be the ones drafting. We would say, here's the content, let's. Draft a new zoning ordinance because that's not really with any more trying to give these per view.
Yeah.
We're going to take the content that they work in, you're going to draft that ordinance. We may or may not hire expert help. We have a budget for it and then we're going to have a separate proposal. You know, like anywhere, those like the solar ordinance, we're going to bring this to the select board. We have a public hearing on it. We're going to bring it to the select board and then try to move that in. If. To me, we want to get the content. Ready before we try to do that.
Yeah.
And so we still sort of need to do what we're doing now anyway.
I think, yeah, I totally.
It is my is my mission, so it does create a little bit of redundancy, but um. Given that we're sort of here in the process, I guess, that that's my passion. Again, it doesn't have to be what we do, but.
Just going back to the point that Jim made before in terms of the definitions, though, I think an exception to what you just said, which was. A lot of sense to essentially postponing of the integration into the zoning ordinance. Would be in fact to make sure that the definitions are reconciled. And the best way to do that is to go back and actually and then then the zoning ordinance.
You have to make changes.
So then with that exception, though, I think what you said next absolutely sounds.
So that could, that could be one first step perhaps is. Because definition changes would not be a huge. That would not be a huge undertaking. Definitions don't have to be that controversial.
And we're supposed to wrap up at nine, but if you take a vote to extend it, we can do that.
I have to take a vote. I would love to, we have five minutes, there's maybe one more. Point that I'd love to bring up for people to think about um and ask it already. Can we have a vote to extend ten minutes?
We're supposed to wrap up at nine, if you want to.
Make a motion that we extend the meeting to more than ten minutes of this.
Okay, okay, better below.
All in favor?
Second, don't you?
Second, sorry, during the second, second. Dog all in favor? All right, I will try to make this very brief. The one thing that I uh. Is really hoping you can talk about is the changes to the mobile phone ordinance. Um. We removed some. Language such such as in section was F and G standards protect groundwater supply and quality. Um. There is the removal of language specifically applying to mobile home parks. And I guess I didn't see that language appear anywhere. And I was curious, basically the the changes to the mobile phone. So there's that change and then we'll get to section two, specific regulations for next year. Uh, at the bottom of the ordinance, there's a section for specific regulations for mobile phones. This is, so there's a few sections down here. Yeah, section three, specific regulation for mobile home parks. There are a small number, so. First one is the removal of mobile home specific language around water quality, which I I think your intent was to get it out of the campground section. Um. But then I wondered if we're lacking standards for mobile home parks that we need to then incorporate into the mobile home in section three. Um, but there were a couple of substantive changes to the specific regulations for mobile home parks. And. My biggest question here is simply whether that's within sort of within scope. Um. Because like the moratorium is focused. On campgrounds. And so.
On this point.
Most of the change, it's, you know, a couple of the changes I have questions on, some of them I agree with, but I'm. Wondering if that's really someplace we want to. We want to go in the specific ones, I guess, that I had questions around were. You know, we're. Preventing on-street parking. Um. Preventing. Structures of street through placing the buffers strip. Um. Adding some. This is section on park administration that we added uh. Making the administrator responsible for all structures in the sites, which that makes me wonder if the individual is not maintaining their. Oh, does that become the responsibility of the operator? And it's just that these are. Not necessarily, they're good things to discuss, but do we want to be making these now as part of the? Um. So. As part of the uh.
To define the story in any of the other, you didn't.
Yeah. So the good news is we're not going to charge you extra for recommendations on mobile home parks.
That that was.
But I mean, I I I guess we figured if we were going to do it, we would want, we wanted. So I mean, we can separate that out and just make them, you guys can consider that separately if you want to make changes to them.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess I can imagine. Send a couple of suggestions. There's a couple of to me that seem like they might have been talked, but maybe we could cut out a few that are. Very, you know. Like, oh, like a number of them were sort of.
On-street parking was very common and that's not only for aesthetic purposes, but for safety and fire and police access.
Because you do a while narrower.
Yeah.
In the streets and in mobile home parks. A couple of places we learned, it's a real quick one-minute thing. Recycling is much requiring uh requiring recycling for campgrounds and. And so what's the practice in Wayne's for recycling? Do you have, do you have curbside recycling, he asks? Yeah, right. You can tell where I'm from. Um. What about at the transport station?
Yes.
It's not mandatory, though. It's just voluntary kind of program. Okay, so. It's, okay, just pointing it out.
Um. Yeah, I can send those comments along separately, I guess, my 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 preference would be to keep anything sort of potentially. Controversial or substantive maybe out of the mobile phone stuff, just because it's. Separate. I appreciate, I definitely appreciate that you look at the work and and most of it is just. Sort of quality of light improvements, um which I agree with. Okay. So. Would you like to hold a public? Hearing for the next meeting, I. Personally think it might be good to get public input. Um, rather than have. Plus slash me to talk about one of the meetings. Um, I think about, is there? A need for a smaller, like an emergency session to to feel like ducks are in a row before going into a public meeting?
Public hearing. Once it gets. Announced, right, we're going to have seventy-five people in here.
And you'd like to have the next, if there's going to be another draft, you'd like to have it available, say about a week in advance so that the public and the board. For two weeks, chip, selecting two weeks in advance, but to make sure, so would you be able to meet that target for a meeting next month?
No.
Okay, we can. We can. We could sort of soft plan on maybe two meetings from now, we could check in with you at the next meeting.
I think that.
And we don't, you can also, we can take a meeting like. Yeah, we don't have to talk about it again at the next meeting either. We don't have to stop. No public hearing next meeting, so we don't need to talk about that.
Well, we do. We have a public uh hearing, sorry for Johnny's, yeah, for Johnny's.
Johnny's, um. Yeah.
And Jim has to address one. Well, there there is that. Language about we have a hundred, the board has a hundred twenty days to to uh make a report to the board of. Both parties are working in good faith at this point, the committee and the planning board are trying to come up with something to review and make a recommendation on, so uh. We, I think the planning board considers that the committee assents to that additional time to allow you to prepare a new draft. Have the public hearing.
Does anybody know when the hundred and twenty days supposedly runs?
October fourth, I guess, roughly. July.
Well, it's October, it's a hundred twenty days from the date the select board would have kicked it over for a comment and. There really wasn't any formal date that that happened, so. I think it's a rolling process and everyone in Big Bay is trying to work till we're getting something done and and making a recommendation, so if that's the case. It seems like it's on track, but.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything you just said, but if you just want to report to the select board, that's sort of where we're at.
Yes. Chip can make that report.
That's the hundred and twenty day report.
There you go.
Still working on.
Certification, so you're saying that then so not the October meeting, but the November twenty-first meeting?
Bit of a soft plan for.
That's not a public hearing, that would be another. That would be another meeting with the planning board.
The idea is that the November one would be a public hearing. Public, the idea that the November one, and we'll check in with you to see if you're ready, but the idea is it would be a public hearing. For the public to come comment. The board could still ask questions, but it'd be, you know, the. Whereas tonight, the primary purpose was board committee discussion, the primary purpose would be public input.
And if it wasn't the public hearing to be. Um, presented by the planning board, though?
Well, yeah, sorry, we would have a public hearing.
We're going to be doing the presentation.
But the November, but the November twenty-first would be a plant regular planning board meeting here with us here. With public. Public being able to make comments, but it will be the official public here.
It would be noticed as a public hearing.
It would be a public hearing.
Yes, and that's if you feel ready at that point.
And. Okay, I just want to make sure.
And what would be helpful is for the committee to be prepared to say, here's our latest and greatest and and these are the changes we've made, this is what it does. So that way it helps the board know what's been changed, but also public and the public can comment. And uh, and if it all seems. Ready for prime time, then the board could vote then or pass out.
Or are we going to?
Or. To consent to go on to the select board.
If if you felt you could have a draft, right, so basically at our next meeting. We could check in with you. Do you feel like you could have a draft in two weeks? What was that? Uh, what, yes, the third, third Thursday in October. We would, I I could just.
So all we're saying is October seventeen would be a checkpoint discussion.
Just.
How you guys doing?
To say, could you be ready?
You want to run things by, if we want to hash things out, a little working. This is always the hardest part of every meeting, figuring out the timing, but just so that, so just so that we're all absolutely crystal clear. Our goal should be to get you whatever updated final work product we have. Two weeks before the November scheduled meet, right, right?
Yes, but I want to stress that. This is. If, this is like. This is a. I am asking you, this is if you would like to have a public hearing, you need to have a public hearing. We need to host one, but. We don't need to push you to have it at any particular time, if you feel like you can be ready.
Our goal, our goal is going to be to to be ready. If we can't, we'll let you.
Yeah, I mean.
Probably because that would be the check-in in October.
Yes, that I think that's a, that would be a great plan, check in with the October, the October meeting.
Because that's where we've announced the public hearing.
We can.
Vote on it.
Confirm. Whether or not we'll real, we'll be ready for the November twenty-first public hearing, as that sound.
That sounds good.
One point for clarity, just to repeat again. At that public hearing, at its conclusion, you are not voting this up or down. All you're doing is. Expressing your opinion, up or down, either way. It goes from you to the select board. That's uh, that's the way it's.
But that's an upper down vote.
Yes, just with the upper down suggestion, yes.
Yeah. Just that it's not buying anything.
Yes, I want to mention that we think there should be some way of rotating. The minutes responsibilities since we have no one here on this committee. The responsible for the minutes, yeah, and we've had some, but we think it. Something, I think.
Maybe you should mention that at the beginning of the meeting.
So we're suggesting that.
Nobody will do.
So.
So we have to get it next time.
You know, anybody that's smart could do us for eighteen dollars an hour, break them in.
We can try that. All right, let's, I mean, maybe next meeting we could try, we could have somebody taking notes, but also have chat GPT take notes. Work, see how they come up, because like, yeah, if it's one thing.
No.
Because I think, I mean, I think you're right, it'll probably work. We should have somebody read through. But we also, we already. Well, we already usually, I don't think it will be, we we already like. You know, we get the minutes to approve, we should just read them if they're coming from GPT. All right, yeah, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, do we, do we have? Do we, we have to, uh. Richard, yes. Nice to see you. Thank you for joining us. I already won.
Thank you for coming.